Welcome to the April 3, 2019 Bethlehem Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in executive session since 6:00 PM discussing an independent audit review and a personnel matter. And if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And can we have introductions, please?
Will O'Beare.
Christine Beck.
Meredith Mearney.
Jody Monroe.
Michael Cooper.
Holly Dullenbach.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Chris Meyer.
And Judy Kehoe.
Do we have any pig students here this evening? Okay. Your obligation is to stay until 9:00 PM or till the end of the meeting, whichever comes first. If we're still going at 9 o'clock, we'll take a brief break so you can come up and sign out. There are sheets on each of the tables for you to sign out. And if you have any paperwork that you need signed for your teacher, just see any of the Board members. First up is the minutes of the March 20, 2019 Board Meeting. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the March 20, 2019 regular Board Meeting. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Do we have anyone here from the Student Senate? You can come up to the microphone.
Senate has been, so far, what we've been planning to do in the next couple of weeks is pick a date for a dodgeball fundraiser. And those proceeds would go towards the backpack program, which we run. And then also, we're running a blood drive, I think mid-April. And that's about it.
Do you have a date for the blood drive?
I think it's April 14, or somewhere that week. I don't actually remember the exact date. Thank you.
Thank you. And Superintendent, report.
Thank you. So, a few announcements. I'd like to congratulate Margaret Su, who is a member of our National Honor Society, but we've learned that she received a National Honor Society Scholarship worth $3,200. So, it's a pretty good scholarship for someone to receive, so congratulations. I'd also like to recognize some of our Odyssey The Mind students. So, our Hammergrill students, Ezra Cotton, Sierra Obernasser, Amelia Bider, Oliver Reichman, Jackie Miller, Charlie Ledoux, all earned an invitation to the World Finals in May. And they're in Iowa still? Is that correct?
Michigan.
Oh, Michigan.
This year.
So, at the New York State Competition, they finished, a team of 5th grade finished in 2nd place. And the 2nd place finish earned the team an invitation to compete at the finals in May. Oh, at Michigan State, correct. We also had two other Bethlehem teams finish in the top 5, including the Bethlehem High School team and the Middle School team in 5th place. So, a total of 6 Bethlehem teams faced off against other teams from across New York. So, I'd like to congratulate all of them. And it was interesting, the Hammergrill 5th grade team, who are going to Worlds, they had to design, they had to build a wood structure, and it weighed only at 15 grams, but it held an amazing 571 and 1/2 pounds of weight. That was pretty impressive. And I'd like to also recognize some art students. So, we have 12 students in the accelerated studio art class at the middle school who are selected to participate in the equine-related artwork that's on display now at the National Museum of Racing. And the opening reception will take place on April 24, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM up in Saratoga. Also, at the Bethlehem Public Library, if you're over there, the Bethlehem Central High School Art Honor Society is holding its annual student exhibit. The student president, Julia Higgins, led the group this year and organized this show around the theme of song lyrics. And that's on display, the largest, this is the largest exhibit the group has organized, and there's over 55 students participating, so there's a lot to see there. And there's also faculty artwork there on display as well. I also wanted to just provide a little bit of an update for the middle school computer-based testing, if you haven't heard or seen it on the news. Our middle school did elect to do computer-based testing for ELA this year, so the first day was Tuesday. And downloading it and taking it was fine, but the upload was a little bit of a problem. So, they were scheduled to take the second day today, and that was put on hold by State Education Department. Tomorrow was, they were given the okay to go, but the student, the middle school decided they're going to wait until Friday to do the second day of testing to see how tomorrow goes. And our 3 through 5 students were not doing computer-based testing. They were doing paper-based, so there were no issues with that. And also, Superintendent's Conference Day, we had on March 22. It was a great day. We had a keynote speaker, Derek Clark, who was in the foster care system when he was young. He spoke a lot about resiliency and how to work with students who struggle. And he was very well-received. And then we had a large option of workshops for teachers to select from, and we ended the day with wellness sessions. So, we had a lot of great activity, so it was a good day. And that's my report.
Okay. Next up is the Board of Education report. On the 21st, I was able to attend the first of the district band festival concerts. Unfortunately, I couldn't make the second one. That is always such an astounding event, especially when you hear the youngest students who have not been playing for very long, and, you know, you would think they had been playing for years. So, I just want to thank all of our music staff and Mr. Linna Berry, the guest conductor, for putting on a great show. And we normally do committee reports after, but since I'm talking, I'll do it now. The Policy Committee met a week ago, last Monday. And a while back, the Board had gotten an inquiry by email from a parent regarding transportation for athletic competitions and requesting that we set up a formal policy for consistency. The Board, the Policy Committee discussed it at length, and we decided that there were no revisions needed at this time for the policy because we felt that each case is unique and needs to be dealt with on a case-by-case basis. It doesn't make sense to make a blanket policy. So, I just wanted to mention that. And I will reach out to the parent tomorrow to let him know that we had discussed it.
Well, just to, I know it was the Policy Committee that talked about it, but why would we just do it on a case-by-case basis and allow for certain circumstances for some, sometimes, but not always?
Some of the, some of what he was asking about involved clubs. And clubs are fundraising for some of these. All the athletic trips that are sponsored by the district section or state, we do provide transportation for. But in the situation of clubs, because they fundraise, many of them pay for transportation if they're going somewhere on their own.
What do you mean by club? So, I know, the only one I know of is track. I know sometimes, like, they have the track meet that's down south and...
Right. It's not a district.
That's a club activity? Is it like a booster club activity, or just something they choose to attend?
It's just individuals choose to attend.
So, anything that's related to sports or sectionals, even if there's one or two kids, we offer transportation, but sometimes they probably decline. It's like one or two boys, the parents are going, or...
Right. But we've paid for all of those the last 2 years.
Okay.
We didn't in the past, that boosters were paying for some of those things, but that's not the case now.
Okay.
So, just to be clear, for example, if you had someone running track and they were doing the indoor nationals, which is often in New York City, that's something that we would now provide transportation for?
Correct.
Even though we didn't do it in the past?
Correct.
Okay. And the delineation is school-sanctioned events, but not club events?
Right. Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. That's all I have. Any other Board members?
I was able to attend the second half of the band festival, which was also great. It's possible my favorite part was the Harry Potter music in the very beginning, but it was great. And I also attended the Suburban Council Music Festival this past weekend at Boston Spa, and that was also terrific. So, I would, again, congratulate all of the musicians and the teachers that helped them prepare for that. I also got to go to the Dare graduation at Eagle and at Hammergrill. And I just think that's a, it's a great program, and it was nice to see all the kids come through and here there. I particularly enjoy hearing the essays that the 5th graders read. They're always, they're fun to listen to. And then lastly, actually, just today, I attended a policy workshop that NISBA sponsored relating to using policy to address school climate issues and concerns, and particularly making sure that our policies are taking into account implicit biases that we might have. And there was particular focus on looking at disciplinary, disciplinary measures, consequences as opposed to punishment, and, you know, the value of in-school and out-of-school suspensions and how they're treated. So, I thought it was valuable, given that we're going to be looking, again, at the Code of Conduct for its annual review.
Were there materials that you can share with the other?
Oh, yes. There, I should be able to forward them to, I was going to send them to the Policy Committee, but if everyone's interested, I'm happy to send them around.
If you will.
Sure.
I'll go first. And so, I finished off the Dare concert, or the Dare celebration at Glenmont, and that was really nice as well. So, David Van Lugo was there from the town, and Officer Whiteley. So, it was enjoyable. The 5th grade essays are always great to hear, and the kids are always so nervous to come up and receive their certificates, but at the same time, they're really excited. So, that was nice. And then I know, it's not next week, but the week after we start, I think our spring concert series for the high school starts, I think, on the 15th, I believe. And I am actually here on the 17th for the next Board meeting. I just don't know how to count days of the week. So, I return on Tuesday, so I will be here on Wednesday. And that's it.
I have an announcement. Tomorrow night at Eagle, they're hosting the Chris Porter Family Fun Night from 5:00 to 7:00, and it is to raise funds for the Chris Porter Scholarship. Anyone who remembers Chris Porter, 5th grade teacher, just a wonderful, wonderful human being, every child that was in her class just had a phenomenal experience. And so, come out and have fun and help them keep the scholarship going.
And I just want to remind the Board that I will not be here for the next Board meeting on the 17th. So, Holly will take over in my stead.
Excuse me. Point of order, before we continue, I'd like to move to see if we can discuss the first reading of policies before we do the presentation.
All right.
And I would then like to move that, once we have a motion, to go there, well, I'll wait till you have the motion.
Okay. Now, do you want to do the whole, just the policies?
Yeah. You can either do it all together, or we can separate it, but I do want to separate it out for policies.
Okay. Well, why don't we do all of E, and then we'll separate it out. Other action items, item E, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items 1 through 3.
Except.
Okay. Which ones?
You want to remove, isolate policy 1230, 1500, 2660, and 9120 dot 1. Those would be public participation at Board meetings, public use of school facilities, the Code of Ethics, and the conflict of interest policies.
All right. So, let's deal with the other items first. So, can I have a motion to discuss all the other items in E other than the policies that were just mentioned?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on those? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Those pass. Okay. Now, we will take a motion for the 4 policies that were mentioned. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion, good.
Okay.
For what?
We will discuss those now.
I had a question about 1230, public participation at Board meetings.
Okay.
I know that I'm frequently asked how members of the public can have an agenda item added to a Board meeting for public discussion, and I don't know the answer to that, and I don't see it addressed in the policy. And I wonder if we might want to address it.
Isn't that, isn't that something that can be brought to the Superintendent's attention in advance? And the Superintendent can discuss it with the President, Vice President, determine usually a week in advance when we have the agenda meeting, and have, and at that point, you can decide whether to put it on or not. I would imagine that if there's a request from the public, it'd probably err on the side of caution and put it on unless there was a reason not to.
Well, because Board meeting is really a board, like, you know, it gets kind of tricky.
It is a Board meeting, and it is our meeting.
Right.
But if something's brought to our attention that maybe, for whatever reason, we overlooked or we now feel it's appropriate, I think, you know, it at least gives the public an opportunity to say, you know, maybe you missed this, could we, could you have a discussion about it? But on the other hand, it is our meeting, so whoever was at the agenda meeting, President, Vice President, the one Board member guest, would make those decisions. And it would still be within the Board's purview what to put on, but I think it gives the public a way in which to get that information to us.
Well, I think that's what Willow was trying, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but what she's trying to say is, in the policy, can't we incorporate something that says if the public wants to talk about something on the agenda, what would be the method in which they could do that, even though it's left to our discretion whether or not we want to bring it up in the meeting? Is that something that we can put in the policy so that the public is aware? So, for instance, in the third paragraph where it says...
Brittany, can you widen that?
Yeah.
If you, if you want to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students, we're directing them how to do that by contacting the Superintendent. And I think that, that's what Willow was trying to express. And I don't think it's a bad idea to indicate to the public, if there's something they feel strongly about, how, how they could do that in the policy, even though it's at our discretion whether or not it's going to be added to an agenda item.
Yeah. Agreed. I mean, for example, before I was on the Board, we had several meetings about start school late and had no way of asking the Board to publicly discuss it as a topic, because no one, there was no direction about how to ask the district to do that. It's just the example in my mind, but I'm sure there's other examples. So, if we added to that, I think that sentence makes sense just to say, or to request public discussion of a topic.
Well, they can always request public discussion because they can come. I mean, they can come and talk about items not on the agenda anytime they want. So, that avenue's always there. But I think if you want to have something that's formally put on, because there's always a, you know, you can always show up to a Board meeting and talk about it. We might not talk about it, but...
The issue, I think, with having somebody come and talking about an on-agenda item is that at the end of whatever they say to us, usually, the response is, "Thank you for your comment."
Right.
And I think, you know, in the case that Willow pointed out, I think that, you know, if we had had, you know, the opportunity, she was looking for is a more robust discussion, which eventually, we did have, but it was, what, a year later? So, I think...
And it allows for coordination of people to show up together as a community to come speak on a...
On a topic.
On a topic. So, I don't think it would be too hard to add, like, a sentence or 2 to the third paragraph to say, "If you are interested in an agenda item to be added, you know, to the weekly meeting, well, please do such and such, and we will review and in our discretion..."
Yeah. It doesn't mean it'll happen.
Right. And so long, so long as we leave the language at the Board's discretion, I think it gives the public an opening which would be appropriate.
I would support that.
All right. Could we then move to send this back to the Committee to discuss for that purpose?
I'm comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But Jonathan, you separated that one out, so did you have something else?
Well, you sort of hit the nail on the head, so I'm...
We let you do it.
Thank you very much.
That was your concern?
That was my concern.
Okay.
Actually, there is also one other one. With, no, I just, I noted that one, but I didn't note, note this one. The language, at the, the last line, because we're going to be looking at third paragraph, last line anyways, "Person wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should present their comments or concern, and/or concerns, to the Superintendent during regular, during regular business hours, comma, 'of which will be shared.'" I don't think that's what was intended.
I think it was supposed to be, "which will be..."
"Which will be shared." Okay.
There's a typo there.
Okay.
Strike out of there.
That was the concern.
Okay. Next up?
Next. Public use of school policy, of school facilities. I was surprised because I had not, this is not something that's a change, but it brought to mind, it says, it is item I, the language in number 5, for use, and these are, the Board reserves the discretion to deny use of district facilities described above or to terminate use of district facilities for any 5, for any use by a private for-profit entity that has the direct or indirect effect of promoting the products or services of such entity. And I was surprised to see this because my understanding is that we've done this. We've allowed such entities to rent our facilities, and I was wondering if that was the intent, or, as I think is appropriate, this language be enforced.
Well, it says we reserve the discretion to deny.
Yeah. Well, I think it should be stronger because I don't think we should be in a position of promoting a for-profit business. I mean, we're in the business of education, not entertainment. Well, I mean, we can provide entertainment through theater and, you know, the school concerts. But I'm concerned that we're allowing use when, and I'm concerned by the word discretion. I, I think that we should have some discretion, but I'm concerned about the way it's being used right now.
And I look at it as when we have reserves of the discretion, and we have for use, for any use by a private for-profit entity that has the direct or indirect effect. I don't think there can be an exception to that rule. It's not written that way, that it's, is it something that we just pick and choose, and it's not applicable across the Board to all private for-profit entities? Because basically, it looks like we're, we have a policy, you know, where we have exceptions as, at will, when we want them. And I don't think that that's the type of policies we want to have.
I just, I'm just curious, like, what would be a for-profit entity that we have had in the past that, because I'm, I'm just being ignorant on this one. So, what would, what would be an example of one that we have allowed?
Well, my, my understanding is that Broadway-bound rents out our facilities for recitals.
Do they still? But that's, if they were wanting to use, if any lesson group wanted to use our facilities for the lessons in which they were charging fees for those lessons, they could not do that. So, that's an example of a for-profit entity trying to use our space to make a profit. That would not be allowed. If an organization wants to have a recital where there are no admission fees charged for the recital, that has been allowed.
But that's not the way the policy is written. It just says that has direct or indirect effect for promoting the products or services. When you have such an event, when there's programs and family members and friends, that is a direct and indirect effect of promoting the services. So, I think we need to look at that. If that's, you know, if that's the intent, then we just need to change the language on it. But I'm not sure that...
Yeah. And that's...
Okay. I'm a little confused. My, say, my daughters take dance lessons, and they have their recital at the middle So, that would be a private for-profit entity that is promoting...
Their business.
It's, it's business, but, but that's where they can hold their recital.
I'm not saying that we ban it. What I'm saying is that the policy as written does not support what we're doing.
I don't know how it doesn't support it, because it's saying that we can use our discretion in situations like that where we feel a local dance school needs a place to have a recital, we can offer our middle school stage.
Well, if we offer it...
Do we do that? I don't think we do that.
Yes. My daughters are doing that in a week.
It's...
I think I'm okay with the way it's written because it says discretion. So, we have the discretion to make that decision, and if we feel that it's, if the district feels it's inappropriate, then it can take the stand that it's inappropriate. But there has, there has to be some, it's saying that we have discretion, and we will look at those things.
The intention at the top of the policy is to recognize the valuable resource that the school property provides to the community, which is what a lot of these groups are doing. And I think that's a great thing. I think having the discretion when a situation crosses a line and we need to use discretion makes sense.
Well, I guess where I'm going with this, I think it was, I don't know, five years ago, there was a big, we addressed advertising on our school website. So, we used to list activities, or clubs, or businesses for summer purposes, and we no longer support that, and we took it down. And I don't disagree. Obviously, we have these facilities. I think we should utilize them, especially in our community. I think that's important. But, you know, we made that decision that we weren't going to do that, and in some ways, this isn't really that different. So, I just...
I disagree.
I disagree too, because it's, there are only so many places in the town where groups can use, and if they're not charging, if they're not charging an admission fee, you know, for, because I understand the discrepancy there, but if they're, if they have a recital and there's only so many places in town to do it, you know, are, and they're willing to pay the fee for it, then I think our building should be...
So, if I used it and I handed out advertisements for my business, would you support that? Or would you use your discretion to say, "No, you wouldn't"?
We have consistently applied that, and our view has been that if you're holding a recital, the people who are coming to a recital are essentially the family members of the children who are performing in the recital. So, we didn't see that as a solicitation of additional business. It's not like they're opening up the recital to the entire community to come in and therefore to advertise for them. So, we have allowed recitals. We would not allow our building to be used as a studio for lessons because that clearly violates... because that clearly violates the policy. But we have consistently allowed recitals without fees. Because as you noted, we are a public building. We're trying to serve the community, and we want to make a very limited space available to people in those situations.
And if there is a blatant violation, we have the language in there that allows us to deny them use in the future.
Yes.
So we have that leverage.
Which fortunately, we do not have to invoke very often, so...
I just thought there was a contradiction with the fact that we took down any type of supporting of, you know, local groups, and then we would rent out. And the way the policy is written, again, it was just the way it was written, direct or indirect effect of promoting. And again, Meredith, you did say you are promoting in some ways. If I go and see your daughter and I have a young child, I might say, "Oh, I want to go there." So in some, there is an indirect effect of promoting it. Again, we are a community building. We pay taxes. That's not the issue. I just think we either make that a little more clear because the way it's written, I think it can be challenged, direct or indirect effect. I mean, you go to any recital, it's a promotion of business. And I'm not saying not to do that. I'm just saying we need to look at the language. That's, we're on that.
My concern is that we make something so ironclad that we lock out a group that we never meant to lock out. And so by saying the discretion and having it looser, it allows us the liberty to, you know, let in the groups that we need to without having to rewrite a board policy to, "Oh, my God, how did we cut this group out? They're so vital to us." So that would be my concern.
Well, I'm not saying change the wording on the discretion. I was just being more defined in item number five with the way that we're writing the promotion. So it's up to the policy committee if you wanted to take a look at it. That was my thought on it.
For myself, I'm comfortable with proceeding with it as we have it written. I don't know how the other members of the policy committee feel.
I'm comfortable with the language as it is as well because of the reserve of the discretion. Because I think that's, to me, that's the key piece of it, not the, not the part about the promotion at the bottom in paragraph five. Because it gives us, because it gives us the...
As long as we're fair across the board in how we apply it, it just was inconsistent in removing stuff off the website previously because we used to do it all the time to support the community groups.
And I do see it as different only because I think putting something up on the website is essentially like a public advertisement of that organization. As opposed to something that is aimed at individuals that are already consumers, for lack of a better word, of the, of the product.
Meredith, are you comfortable with it?
I'm comfortable with the language currently. Did you have any other concerns with this one?
No, that was it.
Okay.
Thank you for the discussion.
Sure.
With regard to 2160 and 9120, 2160 is drafted. This is the School District Officer/Employee Code of Ethics. As a code of ethics, it should address the code of ethics. My concern is, is that we're talking about conflicts of interest in this policy, and those items really should be in the conflict of interest policy. And I think we're trying, we're confusing the two. Since we have a conflict of interest policy, those items should be moved into that policy.
Can you give us specifics?
Statutory conflicts of interest, that whole section on the first page.
So your concern is that the statutory conflicts of interest piece in 2160...
Belongs in the conflict of interest.
You think belongs in the other policy?
Yes.
I was honestly sort of confused also because we've got one that's entitled Conflict of Interest and then a page and a half of Conflict of Interest text in the Code of Ethics policy.
And there is other text in the ethics that also should be moved.
So I think one of the reasons that it exists this way is these are both, both in large part based off of the NISBA recommended policies. And their recommended policies, this is how they've handled it. They've put this piece of it into 2160, and then they have this additional piece in their 9000s. And so that's how it's, how it came up this way.
I mean, once you go and look at it, it makes sense. It's just sort of when one is titled one way, it threw me off, but...
It's a little disjointed. You could have it one of two ways. You could have a Code of Ethics Conflict of Interest policy. When I was researching it, a lot of policies were combined where you had the Code of Ethics and Conflict of Interest. So it was just a one policy, which makes it more uniform if you're, you know, there's a lot of crossover in some of it. And then NISBA, we definitely changed the language in some of it, so...
We discussed the fact that it was so disjointed, that one was 2160 and the other one was 9120. And we even discussed, oh, should we move the numbering so they're right next to one another? And we decided that for reference or research reasons, we would want to keep the numbering as is in case we ever needed to reference any sort of opinions from state ed. They would reference these numbers. So that's why we decided to try to keep it that way, even though it doesn't make as much sense with the numbering and the fact that they are disjointed in that sense.
And I think in some ways, they are intertwined, so I'm comfortable with having some of the Conflict of Interest language in the Code of Ethics. It's like setting the table.
I am too. They're not conflicting at all. And one thing, and that is why one thing we did, one change we did make was to make sure that each policy references the other, which was not the case previously.
I think on page three, although I don't think they're numbered, there was what I think is a typo. Hold on. It's in the, which, that one. So in the distribution paragraph, in the text that was added, I just think there's a comma and an "and" in the wrong places. Sorry. I didn't bring my copy. "In the list of policies, the district will provide annual training for officers and employee on its conflict of interest." I think there's supposed to be a comma, Code of Ethics. You're listing three separate policies there, right?
No, no.
No.
It's Conflict of Interest.
Okay, that's why I was confused. Ignore me.
It's just a long title.
I think what's part confusing is that the parentheses include, you're naming the policy Conflict of Interest, open paren, the policy number, naming the policy again within the parenthesis. Maybe if you just removed it and referenced the policy number, because that's all you really need to add.
I'm fine with that. That would make more sense to take out the titles.
Within the parenthesis.
Within the parentheses.
Otherwise, I thought some of the changes that the policy committee added, to me, addressed concerns that had been raised in previous meetings about conflicts of interest and perceived conflicts of interest. I thought it was a good change.
I do have concerns about the confidential information, information that was added. The information that was added, this is on page two, B, section B. "Board members, officers, and police shall not disclose confidential information acquired in the course of their duties or use such information to further his or her personal interest." What was added was, "This includes matters discussed in executive session." The problem is, is that sometimes, not often anymore, the board may discuss or may venture into an area that is not protected by the executive session. And just because something happens in executive session doesn't mean it's confidential if it's not protected by the open meetings law. So I'm fine with anything that is properly discussed in executive session, that this language would remain for that. But for items that, by accident, we venture into, as we have done from time to time, and we've been pulled back, those items are not protected. And therefore, those items should not be...
But I'm, I think that it's incumbent upon individual board members that they feel that we are venturing out of what should be discussed in executive session to let us know, and we will terminate the conversation at that point.
And I have done that.
Yeah, and it still doesn't make it privy to executive sessions.
There's some instances where you do need to, in order to provide some context to the discussion, we need to have a little bit of leeway, but obviously, if the discussion starts going down a rabbit hole, that's not acceptable. So I still think that saying that things discussed in executive session are not for public distribution is a good thing to say.
And we added the, those couple of sentences there. They were, it's recommended, was language recommended by NISBA to add after the outcome of one of the decisions that was also added at the end of the policy, application of Board of Education 57 EDR 17147, which is, was a case out of Buffalo. It's the first, the first one. Which actually then cites the second one. But NISBA recommended that those sentences be added as a result of those commissioners' decisions.
I don't think that was in their sample policy. When I looked at NISBA, I didn't see it. I don't know if that's newly...
I didn't see it either.
Newly added information.
I think it was, it may have been a fairly recent addition, but it was in...
It's in my copy that I have here that was printed out like in the last...
It was in the one that we just looked at on Monday.
And like, with regard to needing a little context, context is fine. I mean, there's no objection in the open meetings law with adding context to a discussion. It's when we venture into an area that really should be discussed in public and before it's pulled back, you know, things are said. Those things really are not protected.
And also information that board members are privy to prior to an executive matter that they may be involved with, they had knowledge before executive session. That's still, that's not protected just because you have an executive session and you now discuss it. If you're, if you're a party to something, it wouldn't be protected just because you went to executive session. So I just, I think having that language, you just need to tread with it carefully because just because you have it there doesn't mean that, you know, you could be at a meeting and say, "Oh, we discussed that in executive session." But if it's something that maybe Jonathan was aware of ahead of time, he could bring, he could bring it forth as a board member, as long as it wasn't breaching any confidentiality in regards to personnel or staffing issues or of a confidential matter.
All I wanted to add to this section was, "This includes matters discussed in executive session in compliance with the open meetings law."
Can you give me that language again?
This include, the sentence, "This includes matters discussed in executive session," the language would be in compliance with the open meetings law. And we can cite the, I don't have the citation exactly, but I can get it for you.
How does the policy committee feel about adding that language?
I'd like to discuss that further. Can we table this and discuss it further? And I'd really like to think a little bit more about that.
Okay. Okay, was there anything else that you have?
One more item.
Okay.
In the conflict of interest and in that portion of the Code of Ethics that deals with conflicts of interest, there's no discussion or definition of perceived conflicts of interest. And...
I believe we took out perceived.
And perceived conflicts of interest, I think, are really important because, for example, one definition I found, and I've modified it a little for this purpose. A perceived conflict of interest occurs when an individual may reasonably be understood as having two competing interests, one of which is likely to interfere or undermine their ability to fulfill their responsibilities as a teacher or district employee, for example.
So we had some, a lot of discussion about whether or not to include language about perceived conflicts of interest. And ultimately, we felt like the, in 9120, I think it's the fourth paragraph down, that that language there covered the kinds of situations that, the kinds of, the perceived conflict of interest, where it says, "No person employed by the district shall allow any matter, concern, or interest," I'm going to skip over some, "to influence or interfere with the performance of his or her duties." And we felt like that was, was broad enough language to cover the kinds of circumstances that we would want to cover without adding that additional language.
It is certainly broad. My concern with that language is that it leaves the disclosure to the person who is actually in the center of the perceived conflict. And if the public is perceiving a conflict, if the person in the center of it is not self-reporting it out, where's the remedy?
Then under 2160, any person can report a conflict of interest or violation of the Code of Ethics. And then we list the people...
And...
And that's under reporting concerns.
Which is why I'd love to have these put together.
And that's, and then we, that's why we then also added the additional language under there to provide a written record of issues that are brought to...
Which section?
It's under reporting concerns.
In the ethics policy?
In 2160.
2160.
Code of Ethics.
Oh, reporting concerns on the back.
So in the second paragraph, any person.
The other thing, and I'd have to go back and look, I can't swear to it, but I feel like the municipal law isn't as specific or strict about this idea of a perceived conflict as like the public officer's law would be for you or I, right?
Well, the, part of the problem is, is that the school, for some time now, has been saying that teachers are public officers and have been treating it that way for the purposes of gifts, among other things. So if we're going to do it for that, then this should be, they should help, be held to the same standard. I mean, the $75 in the language that you have is from the old, frankly, is from the old public officer's law.
I'm pretty sure it's actually, it's from, it's in municipal law.
It's in municipal law.
Well, it, okay, but the language is pretty much the same.
Public employees, right, public officer.
That was my argument, but a while back, but okay.
I understand the confusion because of the two policies. I, it is frustrating that they are so far apart, but that is, you know, that's where they are in the NISBA policy.
Well, it doesn't have to be that.
Oh, I know, but like, for, but for ease of reference, like, I can totally understand. It's, you know, it's, you can do it one way or the other, but for the ease of reference, I think it makes a lot of sense the way the policy committee did it. And I also know that you went back and looked at this twice, and this is not exactly the most glorious job in the world. But I also, I also read what you said, wrote, and I really like it. I think it makes sense, and I strongly support what you've written.
I just think ease of reference, you would have one policy maybe where it's combined and you have one number, so the Code of Ethics Conflict of Interest is policy 2160. It doesn't have to be two separate policies, and you can reference one. When you say ease of reference, who is it easy for? I mean, we're the ones...
There are legal cases that might reference the two separate policies.
Right, but we have school attorneys. They would know to reference, you know, 91 or whatever the number is, 90.
No, no, I'm not talking about just for any legal cases involving Bethlehem, but involving any other district.
Right.
Or serious hearings. They would reference those two different, so it would make it hard for some... They would reference those two different, so it would make it hard for somebody to find, they would go looking for those two policies in our policy manual and not find one of them.
Well, we, I pulled up several colleges in New York State and they had one combined policy. I'm sure that there's a lot of similar and applicable laws or case law that would apply to them. I don't know why we need to make it so complicated, but.
It's a different, colleges are very different from.
If we'd even be more comfortable, say, cutting and pasting, reporting concerns and having that in both policies, I'd be comfortable with that because we feel like the policies work together. If that would make everyone more comfortable, we can have the same language in each of the policies. You just felt like for research purposes and consistency purposes with NISBA, we should keep both policies.
I don't have an objection to keeping both. My concern is that if I'm reading one policy and I have to go to another policy to find something and I don't know it's there, I'm a member of the public, I'm not an attorney, I don't do this on a regular basis, but I have a concern about something, I don't want to have to miss, for example, the reporting issue because it's not in the ethics, it's in the ethics section, but not in the conflicts of interest. And that's why, you know, when Holly was kind enough to point out that it was there, my concern was, well, wait a minute, how would somebody know that it's there and to look there? Yes, the policy is referenced at the bottom of the page, but not everybody is going to go there. It's sort of like the school sending out an email saying, see the SSN we sent you for whatever information this email really should contain. And, you know, you really don't want to go two places. You want to go one place.
The code of ethics is cited in the text of the, I'm sorry, the, the conflict of interest.
I understand Jonathan's concern, and I think that would be taken care of if we simply just cut and paste.
We could put that section in both policies.
In both policies. Copy and paste, I should say, not cut and paste.
I, if you're going to go back and look at that, I'd also ask that you look at adding in a definition of perceived conflict of interest because adding in a specific definition that describes it gives the public an idea of what they're looking at. Not everyone is steeped in either conflicts of interest or ethics.
I say, let's, let's table that, let's discuss it at the next policy meeting. And if you could send us the specific language that, that you read earlier regarding the definition of perceived conflict of interest, I would appreciate that.
Thank you. I appreciate the conversation.
So we're going to pull 21, 1230, 2160, and 9120.1. So can I have a motion?
Actually, can I, I want to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Discuss the code of ethic policy, just a little bit, not that there's specific language, but I'm going to actually do a little Len Hart storytelling for a little bit, so I am going to apologize in advance. And hopefully I won't offend anybody at this table, but I can't guarantee that. So I don't know if anybody here has seen Green Book, but it was one best picture of the year. It was a great movie. It was about a African-American child prodigy in 1962 who decided he was going to go run, perform in the deep south, and he took a bodyguard with him. And when he went on this journey, he was handed a book called The Green Book, and it told him where he could stay. So he had a white bodyguard, Caucasian, and he was African-American, and they couldn't stay in the same hotel. So he would stay in the one hotel, the bodyguard would stay in another. He'd also perform at local venues, and they'd have different restrooms. It wasn't illegal. He had to go to an outhouse in the back, and the white people got to use the bathroom in the restaurant where he was performing. And again, I'm going to reiterate in that story, it wasn't illegal to make an African-American person go out to the bathroom in the outhouse. And we as a district, and I'm going to make my analogy here, we have hired people in positions that create a conflict of interest, and it's not anyone in particular. There are several positions that we have done that where it's now a perceived conflict of interest. And we've created the conflict. And we all sit at this table and we're talking about conflict of interest and code of ethics, and we're writing a policy that gives exceptions to the policy. And it's very disheartening to me. I'm very passionate about this topic. I feel that we put students who are economically disadvantaged at a, you know, at a more of a disadvantage than they already are, and we should be held to a higher standard. We champion all of our students to go out and do the right thing, and I think the very definition of ethics is, or ethical moral judgment is the principles of right and wrong behavior. And who best to set the standard for that is the Board of Education and the district. And again, we have a policy that makes exceptions to that rule, and I'm not going to go into specifics at this table because that would be breaching confidentiality. But we all know it occurs, and we need to be the ones that change it, and just because NISBA's policy says one thing or another school doesn't do it, doesn't make it right. And we can all sit here and whoever wants to, but we have four attorneys on this, this Board of Education, and we all know what ethics is, we all know what's right or wrong, and we all know what conflicts of interests are. And we have some, and we need to address it, whether our policy says it or not. And I don't have any language that you need to change that's going to change an exception to the rule, but it's our job to do it. And if we don't do it, then what are we teaching our kids? So that's, that's my moral of this story, so.
Anyone else? So can I have a motion to accept the first reading of policy 1500?
Some of.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Now we will move back to our regular scheduled programming. Let's see, we have the budget proposal overview and discussion presented by Chief Business and Financial Officer Judith Kehoe.
Tonight is the night following our many weeks of budget review that we are close and hopefully will adopt the budget later this evening. We've tried to keep all of our core values in mind as we've gone through the budget review process and in keeping with our strategic plan. Through each of the weeks and the dates noted there, we have reviewed in great detail all of the program areas that were included in the baseline. And our revenues, we will be having some updates to that because over the weekend, the state budget was adopted. And we're, we were not expecting to have a significant amount of additional state aid, and indeed that was the case based on the updated aid runs and our review of those totals. Although our foundation aid increased by $64,000, our BOSI's aid, which is an expense-based aid, was lowered. So that net amount would be a $25,000 addition to our revenue. So as I show you the various elements that are closing the gap, you'll see a $25,000 addition for the state aid. The tax cap rules were also affected with the budget that was adopted by the state. The legislation that created this has now been made permanent. So I hope you enjoyed all of the detailed presentation on the formula and the different elements because it will be something that we'll need to go through with you each year. The calculated amount for this year was 3.54%, and as we had said right from the beginning, we do not anticipate that we will need a levy at that amount in order to get us to a balanced budget this evening. We went into the budget with about a $1.5 million gap, and that has changed over the coming, or over the prior weeks where we have reviewed each of the various areas. We had covered transportation. Many of these budgets have been essentially flat or close to flat from one year to the next. Transportation, no exception. There was a recommendation to eliminate one of the large buses from the fleet. We have 133 buses in the fleet currently, so with this reduction, that will drop us down to 132. There is no formal action required on that, that really is just an FYI so that everybody is aware of the magnitude of the fleet. We do have a proposition, though, that will ask the public to approve the purchase of 14 replacement buses, four of our large buses and 10 of the 30-passenger buses. Because that is a capital purchase, we are required by law to get the public's approval on that, so that will appear as a proposition on the May 21st ballot. And assuming that is passed, that will then give us the authorization to make that purchase. That purchase will not change any of the totals as presented. Those numbers would be rolled into the budget for debt service in the subsequent year. Our technology budget was adjusted with the reviews. We approved a $30,000 reduction in the baseline budget for reductions in the BOSI's pricing, so that will go towards closing the gap. The athletics budget was presented relatively flat as well, and there were a number of questions that the board had for follow-up information. We had a number of public comments and questions about that. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Len Key so that he can speak to those items, and then I'll come back when he's done.
Good evening, everyone. As Judy had mentioned, about three weeks ago, I presented my budget, and as a point of information, shared some numbers and some suggestions. Obviously, I've been asked to supply a good amount of additional information on roster sizes and signup lists and things of that nature. I'm sure we all understand that numbers really don't tell a tremendous story all of the time. I'd be happy to answer any particular questions you may have, but obviously, well, let me step back. I've received dozens of emails, some of which are, don't have the correct information. So that's the first thing I wanted to address. The modified level of girls soccer is not being cut. We have two modified soccer teams. So that was one piece. Some people that I did hear from thought there was no modified girls level at all. The modified nine level has historically, in the three years that it has been in existence in the suburban council, has had very few ninth graders. Generally speaking, ninth graders are playing JV if they, you know, typically. So this past year, we had two or three ninth graders, the year before, a few, a few more. Obviously, nobody wants to have more participation in extracurricular athletics than I do. A key component, though, is a word viable. And oftentimes, over the last half decade plus, I've had conversations with the varsity coaches, both for the reduction and the addition in those programs. Coach Rogan, who's here tonight, our varsity girls soccer coach, and I've had this conversation countless times over the years. So we're certainly wanting to do what's best for the overall program, to give opportunities. And when I'm given the task to construct a budget, make it fiscally efficient. So obviously, when this budget process began in November, December, we wanted to have zero growth, and at the time, a better use of our, my, you know, my department's funds was to reallocate money where many, many children are being cut from a program versus, at the end of the day, not, not remotely the same number. We have some programs that have achieved exponential growth over that same period of time. And, you know, that's just a sign of the times. With the lacrosse's, the youth program numbers are extremely high, as an example, and the baseball softball numbers, as an example, are very, very low. In fact, I shared with Ms. Monroe earlier today, our softball and baseball programs were hosting a joint clinic this weekend, and that's for, you know, elementary, middle school grade students. We had a grand total of six baseball registrants and five softball registrants. So again, just another piece of information. It's not a be-all, end-all, you know, scope, but just another piece of information. So what you see before you, and I, and I do want to kind of explain them because some of the numbers might jump out at you and say, oh, it's kind of, doesn't really make a lot of sense. So for the last three falls, and that's, you see our, our modified and modified nine girls soccer numbers, that's the total number of girls who signed up in the seventh and eighth grade. You also see our modified girls volleyball, volleyball numbers, and you'll then see modified, modified nine softball, girls lacrosse, and I'm going to skip baseball for a moment, modified boys lacrosse, mod freshmen. The reason why you have mod freshmen is there is no such thing as modified nine baseball in the suburban council. It's, it's just freshmen. Out of those numbers there, where you see, you know, particularly the last couple of years in 17 and 18, those numbers in the 40s mainly belong to modified. The freshman baseball team last year had a total of 12 students, 14 signed up. Quite frankly, a couple of cuts were made because of a combination of a safety issue as well as a skill. And this year, again, very, very small numbers on that team. You're talking 11 right now. So the bulk of those numbers are, are modified, not freshmen. So I just wanted to kind of share those numbers with you. Obviously, if we could viably run every one of the programs, that would be ideal. If we could viably, and I use the word viably, so that way, middle school teachers aren't recruiting, coaching staff isn't recruiting and trying to get students, you know, early in the school year to sign up, additional letters aren't having to be sent, so we can get everything done and see really what numbers we have, that would be ideal. You know, and a big help, you know, many, many community members in the last couple of weeks have expressed help in, in any regard, from helping get the word out to coaching. And by the way, I may take some of these people up on coaching because we have many, many coaching vacancies coming up next year. So a combination of getting health office paperwork in on time, students interested in the middle schools who actually attend interest meetings, sign up by the registration deadlines on time, and those are important because that's when all that physical paperwork then gets approved by our school physicians, then actually show up to the tryouts. Because many times, students will sign up, but then don't show up. So again, numbers are inflated, and that's, you know, again, part of the, part of the bigger story. So those are the numbers. Like I said, numbers, as we all know, can be manipulated in many, many ways, but those are the numbers. There are things that I, I think that all the conversation the last couple of weeks, I'm hoping, can really be actually a, so, a positive thing with all the conversation. Maybe some community members whose children are in these middle school levels, maybe that gives us a little bit more reinvigorated awareness that we, you know, we should be out there playing. We, our district does offer 100-plus teams in of, in 32 different programs. We have such a breadth and depth of athletic offerings, sometimes almost too many, you know, because it does take away numbers. And a great example, while I'm thrilled that we have modified track and field now, we have 130 middle schoolers who are performing in that. Many of those middle schoolers would have been doing softball, you know, baseball and things like that, but because of the, the popularity of, of track and field and the success of our, of our high school track and field program, it does, draws a lot of, a lot of students. So as I mentioned, ideally, if we could run everything, that would be, that would be wonderful. And of course, Ms. Monroe and I have talked about, you know, what it would look like if we just added some of the teams. And these are the programs where we have seen very large student growth over this last four or five-year period of time. Freshmen girls volleyball, and they would be called freshmen, they, they don't have modified nine. So we currently have our modified level. Instead of adding two modified teams, that conversation is a, is a conversation where I take our varsity head coach's feedback, and, and her recommendation would be to have a freshman level. So we would have a modified, a freshman, a JV, and a varsity. A four-tier program in which most of the double-A schools in our league do have four tiers in girls volleyball. And adding the freshman level would increase that number that you see there, that's the current 45. Would, would we be looking in to a 16 to 20 athlete growth? Second team that. Second team that we would want to add is a second modified girls lacrosse team. There is no modified nine, and there is no freshman. There is only modified JV, varsity in our league, and that would really jump. That would be another growth sport. It's an area where our youth program, for our girls in particular, is exploding the numbers. And for the last several years, we've had between 20 and 25 young ladies cut from the program. And in the last two years, in conjunction with the great work that the Bethlehem Youth Lacrosse Organization does, in conjunction with Nick Petracconi and now Danny Blanchard, you know, we have kind of put together a pseudo-secondary team with a program assistant, you know, booster-funded volunteer, you know, I don't want to say volunteer, booster-funded coach, and the students that have been cut, most of which, the vast majority, are coming to this developmental program. So obviously, having that second team, those students, we would both have a place. And then the second piece, you know, again, as I've talked about before, the numbers in the boys program has been very, very large. This would give a much better instructional, much better experience, and better supervision, obviously, you know, for the modified boys as well, because those numbers remain, you know, pretty sturdy. So that would be, the $18,300 would be the estimated increase if we added those, you know, programs rather than reallocate money. So keeping everything. Now, I do want to really give you some additional information. These are things that, you know, you may not know about, and you wouldn't possibly. Our schedules are generated a year in advance. So the fall schedule is already done. As you can imagine, you know, the spring that we're in now, spring of '19, that schedule was done a year ago. So just to give you an example of where, I keep using that word viable, the modified nine softball team was folded this spring, because we had a total of 16 total seventh and eighth grade girls who signed up for softball. Clearly not enough to field two teams, right? There's nine in the field, you have to have some, you know, some substitutes. Well, the suburban council scheduling committee works very, very hard to make a schedule, and when we pull out a team, when we fold a team, there are implications for the rest of the league members. So now they all have holes in their schedule, which is unfair to them, and it's unfair to their students as well. So that's a risk, when we have programs that potentially are going to be on the bubble without intensive recruiting to keep those numbers afloat at times, that's an issue. The other piece is, we also ask our coaches to make commitments to us. We ask, we send out commitment letters, again, in May, June, at the end of a school year, for the entire following year, fall, winter, and spring. And of course, some of those positions don't get filled over the fall, and we need to continue to recruit people to find, you know, qualified candidates. And of course, some vacancies occur during the year, just, you know, a coach believes that they can do it, and something happens and they can't. Or oftentimes, we'll have a young teacher who now leaves our district and gets a probationary position in another district and leaves that vacancy. But oftentimes, coaches, like in the case of our modified nine coach this year, you know, they make childcare arrangements, they turn down other coaching jobs. In fact, the mod nine coach, who was a teacher in our district, she was offered a JV position where she lives, higher-paying, higher-level position, and she turned it down because she made a commitment to Bethlehem's athletic program, you know, the students that she teaches. And as a result, we weren't able to field, as you know, that team, and now that coach who gave us a commitment a year ago now doesn't have, you know, doesn't have that potential ability. In the end, this year, because of the support that you folks showed us in adding that modified assistant track position, we were able to slide one of our softball coaches down to help out with the modified track because the numbers were so large, and ultimately, the modified nine softball coach was able to slide over and be able to coach modified. So in the end, it worked out this year. It generally doesn't work out really that smoothly. And I, you know, and I had conversations with Jody about how, you know, I felt very badly because as someone who makes a commitment to us next year, when I'm knocking on classroom doors in between periods, hey, you're interested in coaching this? People are going to think twice about it when they've given that commitment once before and then kind of, in a way, get burned. So those are just some food for thought that I wanted to share with you. There are implications when we run it. So certainly, I would say, if we wanted to go ahead and continue to try to field all of these teams, absolutely, we certainly will do our best to field everything that's viable, but I would say, you know, if we have a program, and again, I'll just use the mod nine because it's the most current, if we have a couple of years in a row where we fold a team, I think that's very unfair to the league, it's unfair to the coaches that we try hard to get and maintain. So, you know, perhaps that's an answer, you know, or an idea path that we can take.
Did we have to do that this year?
This year, we folded the modified nine. Yeah, we do, we only have a modified because we did softball, we're talking about softball, because we didn't have enough. So if we had a second year of softball, you know, we may want to think twice about adding it to that next year's budget.
Can I ask about the softball numbers? Because 2016, we had 27, 2017, we had 37, and then this year, we had 16. So it's very possible that this is just a unique year. Do you have any indication why we had such a big jump in 2017 and then a huge dip?
I would say probably, I think there are several factors. I think one of the factors is that the girls lacrosse team in the last couple of years has become one of the best in the section, and I think just the popularity of that particular sport. You look at the youth numbers, playing girls lacrosse versus playing, you know, softball youth level numbers, it's much higher for the youth lacrosse.
I understand that, it's just it went up in 2017.
It did. And you see those sometimes, you do.
So I, I'm not convinced that this 2018 is necessarily the trend, because we don't really know what's going on with, I understand that the participation with the younger children is lower right now, but I don't think I can call it that this a trend.
Well, 14 and 15 were also low. We, I was asked for the last three years, so 14 and 15 were also low. And again, this has been, honestly, has been a five-year conversation with our staff. And like, as I mentioned, if we can viably field it and we can do it, then that would be ideal, both from a budget standpoint and from a, you know, participant standpoint and finding qualified coach standpoint. Absolutely, that would be the ideal, that would be the best scenario.
There's also not a corresponding jump in lacrosse.
No, lacrosse's been pretty steady.
Well, what about track and field? When did the track and field modify?
This is our second spring.
So it's our second year? So last year was the first year? How many kids were there last year?
Last year, we were high 80s, low 90s, and then this year, now, we're up to 130.
So it was a 40-student jump, which is really significant.
Oh, and we are, we do know for a fact, we have former softball players, former baseball players that are running track and field at the mod level.
So I'm not sure that this, you know, after, I appreciate you putting this all together because I didn't get this from the first presentation, the different changes and the nuances with the modified track and field, but it does seem that the, having the two modified softball teams might not be viable, especially with that much of a jump in the track and field.
Yeah, they're just huge numbers. The modified track and field is extremely popular. The coaches are, you know, it's Mark Nealon and Sandy Panis, Matt Dix, very popular teachers at the middle school. And I've been down there multiple times this spring, and the kids love it, and they're having a great time, and obviously, running is a fitness-for-life activity, so we certainly don't want to stunt the growth of that program. But it does take, you know, we are one of the smaller double A's, you know, we're a middle-sized school district within the suburban council. You know, we certainly don't have the numbers, you know, Shenandoah and Albany and Schenectady, and so most of our athletes are multi-sport athletes, but when we do sometimes add certain sports, that's why I mentioned earlier, with the amount of opportunities that we offer, sometimes it does have a detrimental effect on some other programs.
For baseball and soccer, though, with those numbers, this year, did we have any trouble fielding teams?
Freshman baseball, we have very low numbers. We have 11 or 12 right now. That's very low for baseball. That's why I said that those, that number, we're not looking to do anything with modified baseball. Modified baseball numbers are robust. It's the freshman baseball number, it's the freshman team that we were looking to reallocate that money into the second boys lacrosse team.
So you're saying that the modified baseball would have seventh, eighth graders?
Yeah, just seventh and eighth. It's no modified nine.
And then what would happen to the ninth graders?
Tryout for JV.
So it would be a very large jump between playing with seventh and eighth graders and then playing with 10th?
As far as the, well, ninth and 10th often is what makes up JV baseball, and then 11th and 12th generally makes up varsity. It's not uncommon at all for ninth graders to be on JV baseball. It's not a very uncommon piece.
So what percentage of the modified baseball nine, sorry, freshman baseball, actually make the JV team the following year as 10th graders?
A good amount, a good amount, sure.
Because I would hate to, that's where I would struggle with it, because you don't want to not have them, have the opportunity to improve their skills for a whole, entire year, because most likely, if they didn't make the JV as a ninth grader, they're not going to make it without that piece to it.
Yeah, no, that certainly is an added obstacle. I can tell you, in addition to obviously my current, you know, role, I'm the varsity assistant baseball coach this spring, which is awesome, by the way, and we have several players, though, who were cut as JV members and never played JV baseball and are on varsity baseball. I can think of three off the top of my head.
Do they get to play?
Yeah, they're pitchers.
Just ask the question.
They do. Well, we won't see, and that's another piece, and I'm glad you brought that up, actually, because coaches often, and it's something that I appreciate, they won't pad roster numbers with players they know don't have the skill or the safety level, because then there's another issue. When you carry larger rosters, which we had, one of our varsity teams this past fall carry a very large roster, and then the complaint swings from not enough are on this roster to too many are on this roster, and then I'll, you know, and of course, as you can understand, and it comes with the territory, I'll get that phone call where the mom or the dad will say, well, then you should have cut my child instead of making them come every day and not giving them, you know, a lot of playing time. So there's, you know, you know, there's both sides of the coin as far as larger and smaller numbers.
Can you talk to me about the modified girls soccer?
Yeah.
Then, because frankly, I haven't heard one word from anyone about freshman baseball, but there's been sort of an audible public outcry.
Right.
About the girls soccer.
Trust me, I'm well aware. Many of the emails have been cut and pasted and been the same. One of the, and I don't think it's a big part of it, I think a small piece of it is misinformation. I do believe a chunk of emails I received was under the notion that there was no seventh and eighth grade girls soccer. So that was a piece to it. Another piece of misinformation is that many ninth graders are on modified nine soccer. There are some, but generally speaking, it's seventh and eighth graders on modified nine soccer. The word, you know, modified, from a NISFA, New York State Public High School Athletic Association, the governing body of our section and of, obviously, we're a member of, modified is middle school, it's primarily middle school. The reason why our league moved from freshman, the title freshman, to the modified nine title three years ago is because a lot of schools, similar in the same boat as us, as it pertains to some sports that are getting difficulty in consistent viable numbers. It hit schools like Colony, as an example, Columbia, a couple of years ago. They, if we kept the rigidity of a freshman label, in order to continue to field a freshman team, there would be lots of selective classification going on, APP, which a number of years ago in our district was, quite honestly, the lack of a better word, was being abused. We had 75, 80 students a season when I arrived here that were being classified. That's, I almost passed out when I saw those numbers. That's not what the state ed department has in mind when they, you know, give us this tool, which is an SED process. So, you know, but you're right, the big outcry has certainly bid for modified girls soccer. And as I, you know, mentioned, we have had many times over the last five years where the numbers look one way and then, you know, who shows up is another. Or early in the season, you know, we're trying to add people to the team, you know, trying to find people. So as I mentioned, I think, and I do believe it's going to be a cyclical thing. I think some years, we're going to have an easier time to find, field four levels of girls soccer than other years.
Len, how do you, if you're making, if the suburban council is making the schedules a year in advance?
Yep.
How do you anticipate making sure that we have the right number of teams in the right sports and that we're going to have the people to fill those rosters so that you don't end up having to cut?
Right. No, it's a great question, and it's typically based on just the historical data. We know that we don't have difficulty in some sports. You may remember, and some of you were board members, when we took away the freshman football level a few years back, and we could not, it became apparent after a number of years, and it was actually at the varsity, then varsity head coach, Rick Leach's suggestion, in order to have a viable junior varsity, you know, where, you know, more injuries because we had such a small roster, you know, we looked at three years' worth of numbers, you know. Our varsity head coaches, and some of you may have heard me say it, and our varsity head coaches know, like I said, I have a captive hostage, one of them here, they oversee and manage their programs. Our, we, when we're, when we have a vacancy for varsity head coach, regardless of sport, one of the characteristics that I seek is someone who's going to have a macro view, someone who's going to run a program and look at from the developmental modified level through the varsity. That's from a budgetary standpoint, that's from a philosophy standpoint, a direction of the program standpoint. So we review together, when we have our end-of-the-season meetings, we look at budget, we look at the current state of your program, not just your varsity team did this this past year. You know, and we use that data to say, okay, we're going to continue forward with that. Just like a number of years ago, when we elected, we only had three levels, like we do today, of girls volleyball. We had freshmen, JV, and varsity. We had no modified. And at the time, Lisa Niffen was our volleyball coach, our varsity coach, and we had a conversation, and I said, boy, I feel like we're missing the boat on this. I feel like we need to have a seventh and eighth grade opportunity for our young ladies at the middle school, because seventh and eighth graders will fill that mod, ninth and 10th will fill that JV generally, 11th and 12th generally will fill your varsity. So you have a 7-12 program, which, intracolastically, that's what you want. You don't want to have, you know, if you have an offering in a league that has a modified, you want to have a modified level. Obviously, tennis now, which is another program that our district excels in, both girls and boys, we have large numbers, and if and when the league is open to the idea of exploring modified tennis, you better believe I will be sending you folks a request to add that when the budget time comes, because I know we'll field that no problem at all, and it's something that, you know, I receive emails and calls about, probably four or five times every summer, from six, seventh-grade parents whose children play tennis. So when we have those opportunities, we look at all that data to make those, you know, recommendations.
One thing I wanted to address is something that you mentioned the last time we discussed this, which was that you found that a lot of the younger girls soccer players were self-selecting out because they worried they weren't going to be making the team or weren't going to be able to continue. And I think that's something that we need to address, the culture of particularly our soccer program, because it's so good. I can see why people with, children with, you know, developing skills would be concerned that there would be no place for them by the time they became a junior, sophomore or a junior. So I think it's really important to address the messages that we're giving, that our soccer program is not just for the elite players. Just because we have a very good team does not mean that there's not a place on even the varsity team for our athletes who are not necessarily as gifted. So that's a concern that I'm hearing when, about our culture in general.
When you say the culture, and I want to, I think I understand what you're saying, and firstly, varsity, JV, modified, the state, NISFA, has basically definition of what each of those looks like. The varsity level, obviously, is the highest level of competition. Winning and losing matters. It's not a be-all, end-all by any stretch. While our girls soccer program, obviously, had a very strong year and is always one of the better teams, we have many teams that are high-level, we have many teams that are middle, and we have a couple of programs that struggle. All of them, though, have that same varsity philosophy, where the most skilled are going to make up the roster, and the most skilled of that group will receive the bulk of the playing time. Varsity is not for everyone. It Varsity is not for everyone, it truly is not. And that really is the philosophy of the state overall governing athletic association. You know, Coach Rogan and I were talking, you know, earlier today about just the, that very notion. In the last bunch of years, we don't, or Coach and his staff, they don't cut very many kids from varsity, believe it or not, because most don't try out. If they're not trying out, and that's what I meant by, they won't continue forward. A couple of years ago when we had Coach Rogan and Coach McGann, who was here, we were discussing girl soccer again. And one of the items that was discussed was about ninth graders. You know, how come we had a certain amount of ninth graders on modified nine and JV? And one of the main reason was, we wanted the couple of ninth graders that were sent down to modified nine to have that opportunity to continue to develop and actually play in games. Because those ninth graders, if they would have come up to the junior varsity, their skill set didn't match the level of play in our league at the JV level. So rather than they sitting on a bench, which certainly won't make you any better, you know, yes, you'll be on a JV team, but you're not going to play much and you're not going to certainly develop. You're going to have a much better opportunity to continue to develop if you're actually playing at the modified nine level. So, you know, I, it bothers me as well that there's a notion out there of that. Some of it, I don't think is warranted. I think it's one of those, it's one of those pieces where not enough information of what really it looks like day to day maybe is out there. Because, you know, everywhere, there's a public perception of things and typically very strong programs have that perception. I live in Niskiuna, the perception in Niskiuna is if you're not on JV boys lacrosse by the time you're in the eighth grade, ninth grade, you're never playing varsity lacrosse. My son's, is a young lacrosse player. I don't know if that's true or false, but I'm going to find out as he continues to get older. But that's the perception of the program. So state level programs that, you know, I guess there's the good publicity for a school district that comes with it. And then there's, you know, that piece that we have to sometimes fight. I think if we're offering a seven, twelve program, and especially if we're entertaining the thought of continuing a four level program as long as it's viable, I think we're showing the community that there is opportunities to play soccer. And just like everything else, if you continue to work at your skill, you know, you'll have a much better opportunity of making teams if you continue to work. I don't, I think because our program is so good, you certainly can't just arrive in August without playing for a period of time and expect that you're going to make higher level teams. That's not a fair piece.
And I understand there's not a spot on varsity for every person who would want to do it. But by, by cutting the second modified soccer team, that sends a message to the community that we are only accepting the best players, only the elite players. We don't have room for anyone who hasn't been playing since they were five. We don't have room for anybody who needs to develop those skills. So for that reason, I think it's very important that we keep the second modified soccer team, not just to give those kids the time and place to develop those skills, but also just for the message. If we're having kids self-select out because they don't think they can make a team, I think we send a very bad message if we cut one of those teams. If we keep four levels of play and say, we want more people, we want you playing, we're not going to be tossing you aside because your skill set isn't as high as some other kids. I think that'd be sending a bad message.
I agree if that was what the message was. And like I said earlier, I wholeheartedly support four viable teams. But when people aren't getting people, you know, I could use the community's help then in helping me maintain that fourth level.
Absolutely.
By showing up, signing up, coming to tryouts, not just signing up and then going on vacation. You know, because that happens. Modified tryouts start in the fall, August twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth. At the lower levels, families go away and oftentimes the commitment isn't, you know, quite the same obviously as they get older. So there's a whole bunch of pieces. So with the community's help, we can not only reshape that perception, which is not correct, you know, I mean, I'm there day to day, but we can also maybe bolster those numbers.
Absolutely. I think, hopefully this discussion will really help get that message out.
I just have one more question with respect to baseball. If there was no longer a freshman baseball team next year, would the, would next year's ninth graders, would there be room for them on the JV team? I've been putting aside people who, for safety issues or, I've been putting that piece of it aside.
Right. Probably for next year, there probably would be quite a few opportunities because our varsity team has a lot of seniors. So we'll be graduating a lot of seniors, a lot of our current JV players, tenth, ninth, tenth graders will move up and as tenth, eleventh grades, will be very young next year, probably at the varsity level. So next year's freshmen would have ample opportunity on that JV.
I just wanted to say, like, obviously I was the one who talked about soccer many years ago, but I support still having the two modified teams. I think we have enough girls soccer interest that would support two teams and until I see otherwise, and I wouldn't want to take away those opportunities just because even if there's only five or six freshmen, that's probably the last time they may play soccer. And if we can get them involved at the high school level, I always get concerned with kids playing at the high school level.
No, I know, you, I know.
I know, I don't.
And I know it comes from a good place, I understand that.
Everybody needs a place, a home. The girl softball, it doesn't sound like that's viable. I don't see why we would do that another year if we already had to fold this year. It doesn't make sense to invest the money. And I haven't heard anybody come forward saying, I want to play softball. I think there's a lot of new people on the modified track team, which can clearly demonstrate where some of the numbers went.
What would the cost be of keeping, if we were to keep that second soccer team?
Well, we currently fund them, so obviously, you know, going back to, you know, if we add, those would just be add, you know, if we did these extra teams on top of what we're currently offering. I would say probably is around, probably around fifty, five hundred, six thousand dollars. They're all, the modified levels, they all have, whether it's mod nine or mod, all have the same amount of games, twelve. The coaching stipends are all relatively in that same area. The transportation cost is, you know, six away contests and the average cost of a bus in our league is around two hundred and seventy-five dollars per away contest. Uniforms for that level tend to be stock uniforms, not custom. So they tend to be, you know, you get a team set probably for a couple of thousand, two thousand dollars or so. So the cost isn't tremendous.
And just so I'm clear, because I'm a little unclear on this, is the plan to keep the two soccer teams or we're planning to cut one?
I made a recommendation back in December.
I'm just...
No, I, the reason why I bring it up is because clearly there are many people, as you've all been CC'd on thirty-eight of the emails that I've received. You know, obviously the community is very passionate about it. Again, I think a lot of it is misinformation, not a hundred percent understanding the information. However, if you folks of course, and obviously if Ms. Monroe supported it, wanted to go ahead and try to field everything, I am not ever going to say I don't want to have participation. I believe that softball and baseball are not viable. I don't believe so. I think the soccer, we do a lot of recruiting with the soccer. I think with all of the discussion on the soccer, I think we probably have enough for this fall.
So you think you could, if we were to keep two, you could field two?
I believe we probably could. But like I said, we, a lot of the reasons why we've been able to field the second one is a lot of legwork from a lot of people, you know, and after a while, like, middle school teachers don't want to keep recruiting people in the hallways. So I feel like if we keep it, we should have that, kind of that component I mentioned as a possible idea. If we have a, one of these teams that two consecutive years we don't fill because of all the inconvenience it causes the league, et cetera, then maybe we drop it from the budget. And of course, these aren't, obviously, I don't need to tell you folks, these aren't written in stone. All of a sudden, if we see a huge swelling in softball numbers, there's no reason why, of course, we couldn't investigate the possibility of putting a team back down the line if the numbers warranted it.
It's not directly related, but in a way it is because it's a budget line item. But I'm, I'm a little concerned about the webcasting, which is five thousand dollars, and about the cost of this team. I know the benefit of webcasting because I had a son who ran track for St. Lawrence and on some occasions when we couldn't make the trip up, we were lucky enough sometimes to be able to see him run. Not cross-country, but on the, on the track itself. And that was really nice. But you're not really supporting the school or the sport if you're sitting on a lounge chair in Florida watching, you know, high school sports up here. I think if we're here and we really want to support the teams, webcasting is not the way. We should be going out and actually participating and cheering them on, which you really can't do from your baca lounger in your living room.
True.
So if, so I guess what I would like is some, if you want to try and convince me that it's a good idea?
It's something like, so over, over time, whether it's athletics Twitter, which we introduced, which is, serves as a great communication piece for our community, or it's the use of huddle, which is something that our coaches use as an instructional tool. We always try to be open to the latest type of thing involving inter-scholastic athletics. So from the standpoint of the fixed, you know, camera with the livestream, I do want to make mention that that is BOSI's aidable, so the first year is five thousand. And that's part of a larger BOSI's package that we currently utilize, you know, it's part of the huddle package. So it would be, you know, whatever our BOSI's aid rate is, less the following year. So it wouldn't every year be a five thousand dollar, you know, hit. It not only is, it's any activity that goes on in gymnasium B. So that would be music, festivals as well, could be put, you know, could be livestreamed. And probably the same, with the same, you know, I would assume rationale, it's better to support the musicians in person. But sometimes people can't make it or you have, you know, family members who want to support and see from out of town or, you know, things of that nature. It's a good opportunity for, you know, for the community to be able to see things. And you're right, again, yeah, it's ideal when you show up, absolutely. College coaches use it to see, to see athletes. You know, it's just, it's the next stage. I worked, as I've mentioned, in college athletics for almost a decade. And more and more and more and more, high school athletics is resembling college athletics. Some in a great way, some in maybe not such a great way. But we are in the most competitive league, obviously in our region, and probably one of the top ten leagues statewide. You know, so our athletes, our schools receive a lot of attention more and more. You know, we went from a few years ago of having two or three, you know, on average, signees to eight, nine, ten signees. And again, I know that's a very small percent, I'm aware of that. But we have a lot of kids who don't receive money, who, you know, it assists in them into getting better, into better academic institutions and having more of a comprehensive experience in college if they wanted to participate. Like you said, your son was a track athlete at St. Lawrence, it's a great school.
Didn't you, I think when we talked about this, you were hoping to potentially get some high school students involved?
Absolutely, thank you.
With this as well, like the club, kind of the club piece of it. Get students involved in the...
Actually shooting.
Right.
Right, so actually doing the post-production. So Melanie Painter and I have been working on this for the last year. Having the equipment already on hand means that to get our, you know, broadcasting journalism club up and running, which again, most of the schools in our league have sports broadcasting clubs. They do the analysis, the post-production. Having that feed already eliminates that, so now we can have students working on post-production, on broadcasting. And that's another component.
So let me be clear on this to make sure I understand it. It's not a choice of five thousand dollars for this or five thousand dollars for a second soccer team?
Correct.
No, we would be proposing, so what, what you could do is you could keep, if you kept all of the teams we currently have and said, let's try and fill them all and added the ones that Len had suggested to reallocate, it'd be just under twenty thousand dollars. Or if we think that really it's just the girl soccer program because softball and baseball don't seem viable, then it would be about six thousand dollars to keep, keep that team. So it would be less than six thousand dollars. Right. About six thousand for a month.
I just have a couple of questions. The huddle, first of all, I love, like, I'm a sports fanatic, you know. I'm the guy that, my dad sent me the high school clippings from the newspaper every week in college, so. The idea that you could webcast, I'm a nerd, it's okay. So I love the webcasting. When it comes to the sports, I just have a ton of questions here, I'm sorry. First, I understand the softball, like, the numbers, like, it's sixteen, like, logic. Baseball, there's, you have forty-one there, you said there are fourteen kids that are currently on...
This year there are ten and we're about to get a, an eleventh that's going to have enough practices where they can compete in a game, you have to have a certain amount. The rest of them, thirty-ish, were trying out, and twenty-nine tried out for modified.
Twenty-nine tried out for modified, okay. Now, I think you might have answered this question earlier, but I'm not totally sure. If the numbers are super high on modified, can't the best modified kids move up to freshmen?
They can, they have to be classified though, because freshman's a high school level.
Because it seems like, because if you have twenty-nine or thirty kids trying out for modified and you take fifteen, well, you're going to cut fifteen. Or you could take the top four or five off of freshman, of a modified, bring them up to freshman, you know, and then you'd have fifteen on that team and then I could take five more kids to participate in modified.
And in theory, that's an excellent idea. However, with the state's new APP regulations...
Okay, I thought you were talking about, that's what I was...
That's, they have made it far more difficult to, for students to pass that APP exam. So as an example, we have a new student from Massachusetts who's physically, you know, a bigger boy, very strong, excellent baseball skills and failed, you know, several components of the test. You know, wasn't close. So we couldn't bring him up, so he's got to now stay down on modified. So we won't have four or five on an average year passing those APPs to bring them up.
So, okay, so eighth graders couldn't qualify for freshman based on the new thing? So we are only looking at ten or eleven freshman baseball players?
Correct, that are actually ninth graders currently. In the past, we have had, you know, we have had middle schoolers in the past pass it a couple of years ago. Obviously, you know, the athletic skill changes of the candidate. I have a player here, Josh, why don't you wave? Josh was a seventh grader and classified and then, and played freshman baseball as a seventh grader. His ability though is very high in conjunction with the fact that the state has also... Now I've got to bring his head back down to earth. But it also was easier when Josh tested. That combination.
Okay, now to the soccer. Because if we have thirty-one kids and we have like fifteen or fourteen on a team, we should be able to field two teams.
Correct, and those are the numbers that signed up to try out. So it was probably four or five didn't show up at all, so that brings that down a little bit. And probably four or five additional players that wound up playing and trying, actually trying out. And I think all wound up playing eventually were as a result of last ditch efforts to get more kids to come out because kids weren't coming out. You know, we have, as I mentioned, sometimes students will sign up, but then never show up. Sometimes students won't get their paperwork in, they'll sign up, but then those, you know, a week will go by, you know, and they're still not getting cleared. So we have, there's a variety of issues. Like I said, I think that, especially with all the, and you're right, the girl soccer's received ninety-eight percent of the attention on this conversation. I think the combination of the fact that the numbers are not remotely in the same boat as softball and the giant spotlight that's been cast on girl soccer, modified level, I would assume would result in more interest, you know, more of a push, more motivation to sign up, show up, you know, and things of that nature.
You guys grew up in this town and soccer's like been huge here for, over since Bill Silverman and the guys built the soccer plex.
Our girls and our boys soccer programs are both outstanding, top to bottom, you know.
And I just, I, I mean, financially speaking, I appreciate the fact that you tried, it was a cost, you know, neutral budget, but I also know that, I mean, soccer is a huge, huge thing in our town. And I mean, it's just...
We have to have folks show up, we have to have folks sign up, you know. It's, people are, you know, I've received a lot of information from fifth, parents of fifth and sixth graders who obviously they're not old enough to take part in the inter-scholastic program yet. You know, hopefully the school age teamed, we can really continue to push this and really have it result in forty girls showing up for middle school tryouts.
And just the other thing, just, sorry, I'm on a roll. What?
I said I have one more quick question.
Okay. Just, there was some miscommunication, I think. But I just think in the future, like, I think we could, we could do better to get that message out because I don't think the message was clearly... the message was clearly conveyed, because there were people that were in the soccer community for decades in the community that were very closely tied to this, you know, to the program, and didn't even know that this was a possibility.
Well, these are conversations that we have with our coaching staff, I mean, we, we wouldn't have, I'm not sure, where, where, I'm not sure where the miscommunication was.
But I think there was a proposal made to us on March 6th that didn't get fully relayed to boosters, parents, like, like, I feel like this should be, like, that, you know, I, I appreciate, you know, I'm, I'm a teacher, I appreciate that you went to your teachers and your staff and had the conversation like that, that's absolutely right, but I also feel like, you know, parents and boosters, you know, if it.
This was discussed at BCAA meetings multiple times.
I have, it's probably a very quick question, so, I know it's nine o'clock, but, um, baseball, freshman baseball, can you turn freshman baseball into a modified nine team?
The, the suburban council does not offer that.
Okay. I had a feeling that.
Did, that would be agree.
I had a feeling that was the answer, but I just wanted to double check.
Doesn't offer it.
Before we take a break, what I would like to suggest is that we consider adding back the two soccer programs.
It was just the one soccer.
Oh, I'm sorry, the one soccer program.
Well, we never took it away. We just were.
Well, add it back.
Just one point.
You're, you're just making it clear that we're going to have.
Right. But I understand the, the rationale for the other teams, so, you know, I wish we could.
If we're going, if we're going to do that, Len.
Soccer, they'll get to play one.
If we're going to keep it, I'd like you to, to do what you need to do either, to make sure that it's going, you have enough people to continue, or if you find this year it, people aren't showing up, that we aren't in a position where we're scheduling games for next year that we're going to have to bow out of. So I mean, I think it's important to, to keep the team if we can field it. On the other hand, there's also the consideration of what happens if we end up having to fold, so whatever you need to do to beat the bushes.
Well, I just want to point this out, though, will the girls that are on the modified nine team just have more playing time if there's less people playing? Because I know that was an issue a couple of years ago, that they would have like 15 minutes, or they'd be on the field for 15 minutes. So they might actually get some more training and.
Well, that year, Coach Larkin took a large roster, took 23 girls.
Okay.
So again, there's a great example of the other side of the coin, you take a larger roster, so more kids have the opportunity to play, but obviously, there's only X amount of minutes in the game, so you take 15, and now you can play 18 minutes in the game, or do you take 22, and now you have more kids involved?
Okay.
So would the board be in favor of adding back the soccer?
I would support that.
Keeping the soccer.
Right.
Yes, I would support that as well.
Okay.
What about softball?
I think based on our conversation, I think it doesn't look like the numbers are viable for softball and baseball.
I would agree.
I would agree.
Anybody? Sorry, I got.
I'm sorry, I just want to mention one piece. Baseball has a significantly better chance than softball. The softball, to me, really is going to struggle with the numbers. This year's modified baseball numbers, in the last five years, this was the highest number. Again, the current freshmen, in the last two years of freshmen, have been very low, but, you know, if, if there was going to be one of those other teams that could potentially make it, it would be the, the baseball versus, you know, the softball, I, I'm very convinced those numbers are where we're there at. So I just wanted to add that to you.
So I think we should probably, we know softball's already folded, so I think that. Do you want to try and keep soccer and baseball? Yeah, I think baseball for one more year, just to see.
I'd be okay with that, we can see what the numbers are next year with the.
Currently 30 modified.
Eighth graders coming up.
But I think, Len, under the same condition that, you know, you, you do whatever you need to do so that we know before suburban council has to make their schedule, what we're going to be doing next year.
Absolutely, definitely. Yeah, I don't like going back to my peers saying, "Sorry, all your work on scheduling is for naught," so we will keep a close eye on it and try to get it done.
Okay, I hate to cut you short, Len, but we need to get the pig students out of here.
You mean, the pig students don't want to stay for the rest of the.
So pig students, please come and sign out, and if you have paperwork, see.
Last call for Len piece.
So I just want to, I just want to recap, that we're going to keep, we're going to keep soccer, and we're going to keep the freshman baseball.
And add.
And add the other volleyball, lacrosse, and lacrosse.
So the net effect is that we will need to add $12,000 to the athletics budget, and my recommendation would be that you also increase the breakage savings to fully offset that by the amount.
Could you explain that? I'm not sure exactly what you, oh, sorry.
By breakage?
I, I understand what breakage is, I'm not, I don't understand.
So I had put in a re.
Is this context.
One of the recommended was to take 500,000. I had commented that we actually had a little bit more breakage available, but I was holding it back in the budget, because we have not settled the principal's contract yet. However, I think we have enough within the total amount that we can easily fund the 12,000, so we'll increase athletics, and I'm going to reduce the salaries by an offsetting amount.
So it doesn't change the total budget.
So it doesn't change the net gap.
Thank you.
Okay. Everybody with me on that?
Thank you.
Okay. So 12,000 is the number. Okay, so I know we've been through much of this before, so I'm going to just, all these slides are here as a recap for the public, but there's nothing else I need to add to them at this point, other than to note here on the O and M, we do have 50,000 included within the additions currently, and your request was to consider adding more for furniture replacements. So one of the options I'll show you in a few moments is to add 25,000 to this 50,000, which would provide a total line item of 75, if that is what you approve. Capital outlay, just a reminder, we'll be replacing the bus lift, we already approved the new capital reserve, it'll be the 2019 capital reserve. The TRS rate adjustments, reduce the gap by 150,000. Here are the salary adjustments that we just touched on, so this number will become 512,000 instead of 500,000 to offset the athletics.
And the principal's contract hazard has not been settled yet?
It's close.
Okay. So, okay, so, so you have a general idea of where we are on that, and you're comfortable with this?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Okay. We have the 23,000 addition for the district-wide inventory, so going into the instructional and cess program last week, we have a $940,000 gap. Then, again, we went through the instructional program, we have long lists of both reductions and additions, I will not go through those specifics tonight, although if you have questions, we'll take those. Those were the middle school additions to program, high school additions, 300,000. On the district-wide additions, there's one change, naturally, the day after the board meeting the last time, we got the word that the contract for the Saratoga Center for the Family is able to provide.
Well, we don't have a contract, they just told us that they could meet our needs.
The service needs.
Right.
So we added the 30,000 as a provision for the funding, once all the other i's are dotted and t's crossed, you'll be ready to have.
Does everyone know what that is? So that's the onsite mental health clinic that we talked about.
And when you say onsite, it's here?
It'll be probably between two buildings, between the high school and the middle school.
Okay.
But would be available for all levels.
You go online this.
Well, the.
Budget year?
This budget year, at some point, there is districts who have put these in place, in Albany County have taken, it's taken a lot of time to get all of the things done that need to be done, but our goal would, I mean, it'd be great if we could have it for, in place for September, but the likelihood of that is probably sometime before the next budget.
And the 30,000 is the startup?
It's the cost for.
Operational cost.
It's, that's the total cost. I mean, at least right now, that's what the agreement is, right around there, and that's for, we're, we have to provide a space for them, you know, some phone access or computer access and things such as that network capability, and then we're involved in the interview process, but they're actually an employee of Saratoga Center for the Family, but there's provisions in the contract that allows us to set time and things like that.
So we wouldn't incur additional costs above and beyond just what we're contracting them to permit?
Right, right.
I just want to put a plug in again for it, I didn't expect to see it added back in, but it's really becoming sort of best practice statewide and nationwide to have mental health services more readily available for students, and I think it's, it's an amazing idea.
Agreed.
Agreed. The special education department budget was presented similarly with reductions and additions to the program, and the net, Mr. Hurst had presented the additions broken out by level, as well as reductions by level. This other summary was just breaking it out between the instructional program and the special ed program. So the 644,000 is the net addition for the instructional program, based on all of the various elements that were presented. It's an $11,000 reduction in special ed, as presented. Ferrode Brow.
I just, we, I don't know how to phrase this, so I'm just going to be my usual blunt self, but we have teachers and that work their entire vacation days writing IEPs, and that tell me that they are way over utilized, as far as the amount of people on their caseload, the amount of minutes in their, in their caseload, the number of, of students they see, the number of, of IEPs, that they have to be the, I forget what the term was, but the, the leader of the team, or whatever it is, case manager, thank you. And I'm just very surprised that we're cutting $11,000 out of that particular budget. I mean, I, I'm not looking to spend money, but at the same time, I'm concerned that it seems that we're not necessarily meeting the needs of students, because if we are supposed to hypothetically start therapy first day of school, and if we can't get therapists as substitutes, the students are losing a lot out, and it would seem to me that one way to, to fix that would be to, to get additional therapists, and then to have, to cut 11,000, I, it doesn't, it's not logical, it doesn't make sense to me.
Well, the, the reductions are because of the 2.0 teaching positions, and we still have 1.4 teaching positions that are currently unassigned, which is why in that slide, we talked about that there could potentially be, when, when we add or reduce positions, we don't actually have the board officially create or abolish positions till after the budget passes. And with special education, because they're still doing annual reviews, and there's still placements that are being determined, there's over 1.0 that's currently unassigned. So that 2.0 teacher reduction is actual, with, based on student needs, and part of that is because we have so, so many less special education students that require special ed teacher services, what you're referring to, I think, is related services.
Okay.
So the instructional piece of it, because of the RTI program, which is a very effective model, it's been in place for about five years now, so we have less students being identified that need those, that level of support. So in regards to related services, we are adding the occupational therapist, which was approved in January, so there's an offset to that, but the reduction is really a result of the teaching piece, that we don't need the teachers, but we're adding occupational therapists, we're adding a psychologist, and we're adding the social workers, so.
So therapists, you're, you're adding and you're taking away a part of a teacher.
Right, just because of numbers.
Okay.
Right.
And one point, what was it that was?
1.4.
1.4 is unassigned because you're not sure.
What we need.
What you need yet.
Right.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, now it makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I knew I wasn't answering that question. So, this is just the previous slide, so you know where we left off with the $940,000 gap to close. If we put in the 644,000 for the instructional changes, the 11,000 reduction, we go with a net zero on the athletics changes that were approved, offset with breakage. This option adds $25,000 more for the classroom furnishings, so that would bring that 50,000 that Greg had requested in the O and M budget up to 75. This reflects the additional state aid that I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, adding 25,000 to the revenues. To close the budget gap, or to balance the budget, we would need to have a tax levy of 2.39%. So that's great, because it's well under the maximum allowable tax levy per the tax cap regs, which was 3.54%. It's below the rate of inflation, that was 2.44%. The only concern that I have with that level, that I did want to flag for you, relates to the preliminary assessment totals that I have received from the towns of Bethlehem and New Scotland. If the board were to approve this budget with the 2.39% tax levy, the district is only going to get 2.39% more, or the $1,573 more in tax dollars, to fund our budget. However, because there are the two communities of both Bethlehem and New Scotland residing within the boundaries of the school, they share in that levy, so it gets split between them in proportion to their overall assessed values. Their assessed values get adjusted by the equalization rates that are set by the state. New Scotland has a reduction in their equalization rate from 96% down to 92%. So what that means is homes in New Scotland are selling for more than they are assessed for, so their assessed values are undervalued, and because of that, we have to increase them so that they're counted at the same level as Bethlehem parcels, so everybody's paying their fair share of the tax levy that gets split between the two communities. So the Bethlehem assessment totals have risen substantially, they're up close to $18 million. Their equalization rate is not changing, it's staying at 95%. New Scotland has only had about a $1 million growth in their assessments, which is relatively low, plus they've had a 4% drop in their equalization rate. So that means that when we calculate the rates, if I calculated them today with the numbers that I have, New Scotland's tax rate would be going up close to 6% or about $304 more on a $250,000 home. Bethlehem, because of that growth in the assessed value, meaning that there are more homes sharing in the levy, would have a rate well below the 2.39% levy, it would be about 1.4% based on current numbers. So these numbers are going to change between now and August when we set the rates.
Can you just remind me, and last year, it was flipped the other way.
It was flipped, it goes back and forth each year because of these changes in assessments and changes in the equalization rates.
But last year, the gap wasn't as large, if I remember.
Correct, because they both changed, and they both changed close to the same amount.
Do, do we have, historically, do we have an idea of a situation where we, where the board passed a budget, where there was this kind of disparity between the two communities in the past?
Absolutely.
I think it happens quite a bit.
It happens regularly, but I wanted to flag it now, because again, it's, I think it's important information for you to have and for the community to have.
How does it?
We're getting reassessed, I mean.
We, yeah, no, Bethlehem's getting reassessed for next year.
So this will probably be reversed next year.
It'll probably be reversed next year.
Yes.
How does it affect the vote? How, historically in the past, how has that affected the vote, if at all?
How has it affected?
Affected the vote? In other words, the.
I, I don't know. I don't know.
Passage of the budget versus...
I don't think she's ever analyzed New Scotland voters versus Bethlehem.
Well, and how would I, because they're anonymous.
I know, well, that's what I said, you haven't done it.
So, um, the budget has passed resoundingly over these many years, notwithstanding fluctuations. The last time the budget failed was when there was a Bethlehem reevaluation. It was in, like...
'08, '09?
It was like 10 or 11 years ago. It was...
Or before that.
I started with the district in '08. It was around 1993. It went way back because...
No, we had a, we had a majority vote. We had to go back to the vote.
When I was middle school principal, it went down. So that was, must have been '6, '7, '7, '8, something like that.
Okay.
It was a long time ago.
It was 2005 when we were reassessed. Bethlehem was reassessed. It was right after that, so probably 2006.
Yeah.
I was close.
So, anyway, that was the last time. And I think that was largely because there was confusion. People didn't understand. They thought higher assessed values meant higher taxes. They didn't realize it increased the overall values, which meant that the rate would decrease. But that's another story.
Do you know the overall pass rate for the average, like, over the last, like, five years or no? It's been like, what, 80%?
It's been increasing every year.
Remember gold, five years is 85%.
Okay.
It's been increasing every year, but the total number of voters has been going down significantly.
Right, true.
Um, this year, I don't know what it was last year, but it, to, on the petitions, I know it's 49 signatures now. And back in 2010, they required almost 90 signatures. So it was almost double the vote back then.
I needed 120 the first year.
We would love to have higher voter turnout. We can't really control that. We put out plenty of public service announcements and...
On the slide, the first one, you say the Bethlehem rate closed to 1.4, about $75 more. And the second slide says Bethlehem rate closed to 1%, and then there's not a...
Um, 50, I updated the slide. The next slide is $54 more.
Oh, there it is. No, 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 sorry.
Okay, so let me fast forward here to the second option that I wanted to review with you. If we wanted to have a lower tax levy, if we wanted to drop it down to 1.99%, I would not recommend that we do the additional $25,000 for the equipment because we need to shave money off of our expenditures if we want to levy a lower amount for taxes. I proposed a $238,000 reduction in fringe benefit costs. That is a bit of a leap of faith for me because when I put the budget numbers together, I'm calculating it based on actual payroll numbers times the applicable rates for the fringe benefits. So the numbers that were presented in the baseline budget at $23.7 million for fringes are all calculated out based on our known employees. However, every year, because we have had certain positions unfilled for a period during the year, we've spent less in our salaries. This year, when I do the projections for the current year, you'll see this is no different. We're lower on our salaries. And then that means we end up being lower on our fringes. So that is why I would propose to shave the $238,000 off the fringe benefits. It's about 1% of the overall fringes. And based on prior trends, it is highly likely that we would be fine with that reduction.
How did you come up with that particular number?
That is the number that I would need to reduce in order to drop the levy down to 1.99%. So...
What's it at now?
And, and...
What is it at?
Well, it's, if, when you say what's it at now?
Well, if you're saying 1.99, what is it?
The other slide, the first option was at 2.39%.
It causes me concern, though, when the words leap of faith and budget are used in the same sentence.
Especially by you because you're usually so conservative in the estimates you give us.
And, and because I am conservative in those estimates, we typically will spend less than our budgeted amount. So let, hold that thought, and let me go through and review the other projections, and then that will give you the full picture of why I was willing to put that up there for you to consider. So our projected results for the current year. On the expenditure side, if you drop down to the second line, the salary's below budget, $975,000 below budget. When we went into the budget year, those were all positions that existed and that were going to be filled, but we had a number of vacancies occur during the year. People either left the position for one reason or another, and it took us some time to fill those positions. Whenever we carry positions, we had some in the tech office, we had some people who had retired in O and M, that we had breakage. We didn't know we had the breakage in the budget until after the budget was already adopted. So if you go across all of those various departments, special ed, we had a number of positions that were unfilled that we were able to do based on the needs of the students.
Aid positions, aid positions.
Yeah, and, yeah, in the aid positions. So in total, we are under-expending on our salaries $975,000. Last year, we under-expended on our salaries about $1.1 million. So out of a $98 million budget, when you have some vacancies during the year, you will under-expend. Because of that, all of the other expenditures included in that $647,000, that includes some fringe benefits that are below budget, and we've under-expended on certain supplies and things like that based on our projections. So I think we have the capacity, you've seen every year when we go through the year-end results, because it's been conservative, we have had unexpended amounts. Every year, I'm trying, ideally, I would love to have a zero, a complete break even on our results. Also unusual this year, you've seen the last few years, our revenues, we've been just about spot on with our projections. We have about a $1.2 million positive variance on our revenues this year. Part of that is timing differences. So for instance, we had anticipated that the sale of Clarksville would have closed last fiscal year. It did not. So those proceeds came into the district in this budget year, plus we had a few months of additional rent as that review and approval process was going on. Interest rates on our investments increased substantially after the budget had been adopted. So there's close to $300,000 additional revenues from interest earnings. We also had more state aid than we had expected for some of the expense-based numbers. So it is an unusual year. It's a positive event, but that's 1.2 million above budget. So from an operating surplus standpoint, we're going to be at about $2.8 million to the good. We will then, though, have to make the transfer for the $4.9 million that has been approved to fund the $32 million capital project that's just getting started now. That shows as an expense or a reduction in the monies within the general fund. So that $4.9 million that's going to move from the general fund into the capital project fund will cause a net loss of $2 million. It's a planned loss. It's nothing to be concerned about. But that $2 million is the amount that your overall fund balance should be dropping from last year to this year.
Which puts fund balance where? I'm sure that's your next slide.
That's, you know me well, yes. So if you go to the fund balance projections, and before I get to that, though, what's new in the budget I never thought I would see this day? The legislature has authorized the creation of a teachers' retirement system reserve. It is...
I'm surprised you're not dancing.
I, I, I would, except the hour is late. I don't have a dance and shoes on. Um, this is fabulous because we have incredible fluctuations on these premiums. And the only thing that we were allowed to reserve for was the ERS, which is the smallest piece of our payroll. So we have about $15 million in ERS salaries and about $32 million in TRS salaries. This is the one that is impactful and that will make a difference for schools. There are strings attached to it, of course. You can not put in any more than 2% of your prior year's TRS salaries in any given year, nor can you let it grow to be more than 10% of your TRS salaries. But that's okay, even with restrictions. This is still a very positive tool for districts. So the projection for fund balance for this fiscal year end drops about $2 million from the $19,687 from last year, June 2018, drops down to $17,657. The undesignated amount, which is the second row from the bottom at $4 million, that must remain under 4% of our adopted budget for 1920. So based on these projections, we will hit that. It will be around 4 million. Based on an analysis of the other reserves, the workers' comp reserve, I will be recommending, unless we have a bad claim between now and June 30th, I will be recommending that we lower that amount to 1.3 million. The ERS reserve will be able to be reduced down to 2.4 million. I do a five-year averaging of what we've actually paid on that, and that number is reasonable based on that. The $500,000 on the bottom there is the recommended amount to go into the TRS reserve. That will be reported as a sub-fund according to the legislation. So when, if you look to the property tax report card that was drafted up, you're actually going to see under the retirement reserves 2.9 million, and that's because we have to combine the two reserves, the ERS plus the new TRS reserve.
Can I ask you a quick question? If the capital reserve wasn't to be approved the 2019 voting time, what would we do with the surplus?
I would be reviewing my calculations and making different recommendations as to where to...
Spend.
Not necessarily spend, but where to put it into the reserves. I might look at the employee benefits reserve or the tax receivables reserves. I would look back at those numbers and adjust those assumptions. But based on what we know now, and based on, it's a common sense option to create these reserves because what it does is it allows you to borrow less money, which ultimately saves the taxpayers more. So I'm making a positive leap of faith that it will be approved.
And just, just to be clear, like, the, the drop from 19 to 17, when people see that, they go, oh, no. But that was totally planned. This was something that we knew. We were accounting for it. This was part of the building plan.
Correct.
Perfect.
And we've been talking about that for years, and that was part of the resolution that the voters approved with the board, that we would transfer, because that's why we created the 2015 capital reserve so that we could put money in there. And in fact, that line item at 5.1, what that represents is the 9.4 that we had in there last year, we would actually fund in another $600,000 to increase that to its maximum of $10 million. And then we transfer out the 4.9 million that was approved to finance a portion of the $32 million project.
So, just to clarify, the 5.1 would be remaining, so we, when we go out with the next bond, part of that would be to use that 5.1 in that, correct?
Yes.
Because we have to spend that down within the 10-year period.
Within the 10-year period, which would be 2025. So I would envision that we would draw that full 5.1 with the next project. But that's for another meeting.
So is there, and this is with recommending that we not do the extra $25,000 for the furniture? Because that was the last, the last slide you showed had, you took that $25,000 out.
So yes, I went back to that. So the second option is if we are going to lower the tax levy down to the 1.99%, I would not recommend that we add the $25,000 for the furniture because it would be nice to have, but it's certainly not essential. We're thrilled even to have the $50,000 in there as a designated funding source for that equipment.
What does it do to the number, though, if you have the second option and you put that $25,000 back in?
It would pop it up. I'd have to run the calculation for you, but it would probably go to like about a 2.05% tax levy. 2.02, you know, a little bit higher.
And if it was taken out of one of the, um, the encumbrance, the one of the reserves, the, you have one reserve, the unencumbered reserve, which is the 4%, under 4% of the year's budget?
Undesignated.
Undesignated, rather, thank you. Um, that would be...
The fund balance.
All right. So the undesignated has to be under 4%. But we seem to ride as close to that 4% as we can get.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
That's my recommendation because, remember, we need that for the unexpected.
How much of that do we use on a year-to-year basis?
We haven't had to use it. We're maintaining it at about the 4%, which is the highest amount. So you, you have invited my annual reminder, every other local government, their boards are allowed to establish a reasonable fund balance based on the operating needs of their district. That unofficial rule of thumb is between 10% and 15% of your annual expenditures. 4% is all that schools are allowed to have, and it is really low, in my opinion. So that's why I will always recommend to you that we go as close to the 4% as we can. And if we have a surplus, we will tuck it into these other reserves because there are legal, valid purposes that will benefit the community.
We use it, Jonathan, when there's a budget gap and we're not getting up to date.
I know when we use it. It was more a matter of, I, you know, you don't necessarily see it go fluctuate from year to year, so it's sort of hard to tell when you're actually dipping into it.
So foreshadowing again, we also had presented...
You do such a wonderful job of that.
You know, you're just, you're handing me softballs tonight. The multi-year forecast. We still are structurally balanced. There are no major concerns on our long-term horizon. However, next budget year is going to be a tighter budget year due to the timing of when the state aid starts to flow on the $32 million project relative to when the debt service starts to flow. The state put an 18-month lag in. So it will be a tighter year, and that might be the time when we say, you know what? This is a one-time thing. This is the perfect opportunity to appropriate some of the fund balance and to draw down maybe 1% below the 4%. That's what that is there for. So you might see that next year.
That's our rating too, right? We go into our fund balance or go, like, didn't you indicate once?
If you appropriate your fund balance, if you dip into it on a regular basis, it is seen negatively in the eyes of the rating agencies who determine how good your credit is, which then in turn affects the interest rate that you get when you issue bonds. So our credit rating has been affirmed recently as still very high. Because of the way we use, the way we budget, it is conservative. We don't have wild fluctuations. We have strong fund balance numbers through the appropriate use of reserves. So I'd like to keep it that way for as long as possible.
Just based on, sorry, just based on what you're saying, like, you know, I'm still hung up on that leap of faith comment about the second one. I, I just, that concerns me, and so I look at the, the first one and, you know, if there's less of a leap of faith, you know, I...
Do you want to, I mean, is it a leap of faith or, because to me, it, it sounds, based on what, what you've shown us, that it, that's pretty reasonable considering that this year we had 975,000.
Historically, we have had a $2 to $3 million under expenditure... Historically, we have had a $2 to $3 million under expenditure in our general fund every single year. Because we have budgeted conservatively, we haven't been hammered with high unexpected charges, we have had under expenditures due to vacancies and things like that. And people, I talk about this culture of restraint. People do not, just because they have it in their budget line item, they don't go out and they spend it. Our principals and our supervisors spend it on what is necessary for the program.
We've had a, well, we've also, the last two to three years, we've had a lot of retirements, not only in our teaching staff, but in many of our...
Non-instructional.
Non-instructional, which doesn't necessarily align with our budget process, because when we talk about breakage, that's because teachers are required to give us notification prior to January 1, which does help us with budgeting. But our non-instructional staff do not. So they tend to retire at random points in the year.
Like when they get eligibility for their pension benefits.
Sure. And we have had some challenges in finding people for certain positions, or it's taken us, we might have to post two, you know, a couple times before we find someone, which then leaves that vacancy, which then creates more of a surplus with not only salary, but also fringe benefits. So there's definitely been quite a turnover in two to three years, which is what Judy's referring to for the salary piece.
So less a leap of faith and more an educated hypothesis with reliable data.
I am 100%. I'm sorry if I concerned you with my choice of language. I am 100% comfortable with either option one or option two. I presented them both, just so that you could consider them.
Let me put it this way, and I understand Chris's concern about phrase, and perhaps it was unfortunate. On the other hand, you're probably the one person that I would take that from and say, "Yeah, I could, I could accept a leap of faith from you," because consistently, you have budgeted very conservatively, and I've been watching board budgets for a long, long time, long, much longer than I've been on the board. So as long as you've been here, that's really been something that you've been known for. So I'll take the leap of faith from you.
Yeah. I'm comfortable with it, again, knowing the cycle of our operation. I think we could easily absorb that adjustment.
She meant to say comfortable.
I just wanted to say something about the $25,000 for the classroom furniture. Since I was the one who advocated for it last time, I actually advocated for higher, but $25,000 is fine. If there's a way to add it in, I think it would be great, but it's certainly not a hill I want to die on. But it's a fairly modest amount of money, so I don't know what the rest of the board is.
I'm with the $25,000. We haven't done anything in a very long time, and if we're going to have a conservative year, where we're going to have to dip into our reserve fund for the first time in a long time, we need to give back to some of the classrooms for both the students and the teachers.
I would agree. And I think that, the way I look at it, is that providing furniture in the classrooms is one of our, is sort of a basic necessity for learning. And we got the rough number that they would need about, and this is less than that, but about 100, to take care of all the immediate needs. And my concern is that if we just go with the 50 and continue with that going forward, we're always going to be...
Behind.
Kind of in the hole, trying to catch up. So at least for one, this one year, I would add in a little bit extra to try to get ahead of the game.
I agree.
Which also would help us going forward in a conservative year.
True.
So I would be on board with that as well.
Can you take that leap of faith, Judy?
I can, and I would gladly do so. So what I'm hearing is you would like option two, modified with the addition of $25,000 to expenditures.
Which you're saying would bring us to, if I remembered roughly, because you hadn't run the numbers, about 2.04% or 2.05, something like that?
I think she's going to run them right now.
So if I add...
It's just that good.
Yeah, so I'm going to add the $25,000 into the tax rate, so it will be 1.99 plus that factor. Yep. So I will run that when I go back to the table and give you, because you need to know those exact numbers, because that's part of the property tax report card.
Okay, so, just so I'm clear, if we add that in, it goes up to 2.0 something. So the difference right now is about $21 between, per assessed, of $250,000, right? So if we add that, it goes a little bit down. 19, 20, whatever, close. What are we, if we go with option two, I'm just confused here, what are we giving up? Was it option one? Are we giving up anything else?
Just the fringe.
Just...
It's just the fringes.
Just adjusting the fringe.
I'm adjusting the fringes to get you down to the lower tax levy.
So we're not cutting, by going to the 199, we're not cutting any staff, we're just saying that we can live a little tighter.
We're fine-tuning the fringe benefit estimate.
Okay. Because I think some people, this person, this might make me confused as to like, I want to make sure we weren't cutting something that we had talked about previously in order to reach that number.
That's why I picked the fringe benefit line item, because I did not want to recommend. I think the importance of all of the other requested changes were such that we didn't want to come back and say, "Don't do that."
And so you, so you...
It's just an, it's just an accounting, it's, let's put it this way, in blunt terms, it's an accounting trick. It's, and I don't want to say trick, but basically, basically, it's just moving numbers on a line, and Judy is comfortable enough saying that she doesn't think we're going to have that, we're going to have that expenditure, and she's comfortable having less of a margin in the benefits line. So she's saying, since I'm comfortable having less of a margin, I'm willing to move that money to a different line, so we don't have to cut.
That makes sense. Sorry, it was just a little slow processing, probably because it's 9:55.
This is your first budget, right?
That, that makes sense.
These also don't reflect the not taking away of soccer and baseball, right?
They do, because the $12,000 addition is offset by additional salary savings from the retirements. So the net effect is zero. So from an accounting standpoint, I'm going to increase one line, decrease another, and it's a net zero.
It makes it all work out.
Can you do my taxes? No. But I'll answer any questions you have on the side.
Okay.
Okay. So, let me just make sure there's nothing else hidden in here that was really important for you to see. Now, two seats up, and future meetings, so if you adopt tonight, we do not need to adopt anything on the 17th. We'll just give you a quick recap of what the final totals look like, based on the decisions that were made tonight. So, if there are no further questions, I'm going to go to the calculations.
Thank you, Judy.
And tell you what the numbers on the tax report.
Thank you, Judy.
Okay. Thank you for your patience, and we'll now recognize visitors on an agenda item. If you could come up to the microphone and state your name.
Hello, my name is Karen Tu. I'm the parent of an eighth grader. First, I want to thank you for your hard work. I also want to thank you for saving freshman baseball. My son was part of the process, for trying out. There were 40 children going for a nine-spot team. I think the coach ended up taking 18 players overall. Half of the people who tried out, and Coach Palmer commended everyone for getting their paperwork in on time, showing up for parent meetings. The children showed up at 6:30 in the morning for their tryouts. About half of them were 20, were eighth graders, 20 were seventh graders. And I think you guys made a great decision in keeping that freshman team. I feel very confident that you will be able to build a freshman baseball team. So I wanted to thank you, because if this didn't, if it worked out the way it was, I'd be a part of that outcry. So thank you for your time, thank you for the decision, and I think you're going to have a great, those seventh graders will most likely sign up to be modified next year, and the eighth graders, mine included, would definitely be trying out for freshmen. So thank you for that.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Thank you for waiting all that time. Nice work.
So my name is Ronan Tu. So my, you know, my son was just talking about, but unfortunately, I don't know where Coach Keyes got those numbers from, the 25 kids that tried out. So I'm glad that I was able to talk to him and clarify that there were 40 kids that really tried out for that freshman, for that modified baseball program. I myself am a volunteer coach. I coached Bethlehem Bay with 13 U travel team, so most of that, most of the work that we've done over the winter is for these kids to try out. And even though they were seventh graders, they didn't make it, you know, this is where we kind of build that foundation of getting them to that next level. Having the ability to work with coaches like Coach Keyes, Coach Rabet, you know, all the, all the coaches that are, that are paid for by Bethlehem Central, I think is, is a key part of the development of those players as well. It's really important for them to hear different voices, not just, you know, a dad-coach's voice. You know, I know that my voice is at times flawed, so, you know, for having an outside objective voice is really great. So thank you for keeping it, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Bill Davis. I'm the mystery person who sent the email about the transportation policy. So thank you for taking a look at that, and I do realize, I contacted the NISPA and asked them for a copy of that policy. They said they couldn't provide it, and I ended up finding it by Googling it, and I understand you can drive a truck through that policy. So I understand there's a lot of caveats, but I, my kids have benefited from both sports activities and also non-sports, and so I appreciate the efforts of the district to try to make sure that parents and the advisors and all that know where that line is as to when transportation is provided. And I think there's, I wanted to, in both, give you some positive examples and negative examples of where it's worked and where it hasn't worked, and then possibly that's where people who are district employees can more effectively administer the program within the rules. And I was excited that you're looking a lot at policies. I know it's not exciting to look at policy, but it is important to the community, because it helps give you something to point back to as to what's the foundation for how decisions are made, and I think that's very important. And I have to say, you should have seen the look on their kids' faces when I, my daughter dances with their children, and I told them about how baseball is going to happen next year, and they're very excited. I know a lot of work goes into baseball. I was once a Little League coach, so I'm like Athletic Director Keyes, I support all sports, but I also am excited that this district supports so many other activities. And I am curious, is there going to be airplane transportation provided to our Odyssey the Mine group going to Michigan?
No, I believe they take a van or something, right?
There shouldn't be, because there wasn't last year.
So it's not, it's not in the budget, then? Okay.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you for your email. Okay, you ready, Judy?
I am ready.
Okay. Next is budget adoption. It is recommended that the Board of Education discuss and approve the following Finance Action Items 1 through 2. Adopt the school budget for the 2019-20 school year. It is recommended that the Board of Education adopt the 2019-20 spending plan of the Bethlehem Central School District in the amount of...
Which is a 2.06 percentage increase budget to budget, so 10829.
Okay.
I'm sorry, would you give, what was that number again, 2.06?
2.06 percent increase on expenditures.
To be presented to the voters at the annual meeting on May 21st, 2019, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM at the Bethlehem Central High School. And as Judy didn't have enough fun, she gets to spend the whole day and evening there as well.
6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, raw.
And then, we also are considering the Property Tax Report Card for the 2019-20 school year. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the Property Tax Report Card for the 2019-20 school year as per attached, and authorize the Property Tax Report Card to be submitted to the State Education Department.
So I have amendments on those figures.
Okay.
So as we noted, the expenditures will go to 10829. The tax levy with the addition of the $25,000 will go to $67,145,000, which is a 2.03% increase, close to the back of the envelope. And all of the other figures on the Property Tax Report Card are as per the copies provided earlier. So on the Property Tax Report Card, we also will disclose the Property Tax Cap information, and it will show how much under the cap we will be with this approved levy. It also breaks out the fund balance numbers as per the slide that we had reviewed between the restricted components and the unrestricted components. And then, due to the expansion of this form, I think it was last year, we also have to provide detailed information on all of the restricted components of the fund balance. So the numbers that are reflected on that match what was presented on the slide, and the only thing that's different is, as I had flagged for you, on the retirement reserve, it reflects 2.9 million, which is the combined figures for both the ERS and the TRS reserve. So with your approval of that document as amended...
Just a question, does the board have to approve on an agenda the creation of the TRS reserve?
Yes. I'll put that on the next agenda.
So they can do it after...
Yes. Yes. This is just stating our intentions, and these numbers may shift slightly, depending on the actual results, but this is our plan as of this point in time.
When you just redid the numbers, did you, were you able or to determine what the approximate rates would be for Bethlehem and New Scotland?
Yes. So the rates...
And I know it will likely change.
It will absolutely change, because the towns are still processing adjustments. So it would be a 1.06% increase for Bethlehem, and a 5.46% increase for New Scotland. On a $250,000 home for Bethlehem, that would be approximately $56, and for New Scotland, it would be approximately $285 more.
Okay, we need a motion.
Shall move.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? You sure?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes.
Okay, we have a budget. Thank you all.
Thank you.
This must have been a lot easier for you.
Oh, my God. I'll do this. Everything.
Next is Finance Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Finance Action Items 1 through 3.
Shall move.
Second. Okay. I just want to thank Stuart Shops for partnering with Elsmere Elementary Library on this donation. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Professional Personnel Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Professional Personnel Action Items 1 through 9.
Shall move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Next is Support Personnel Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Support Staff Action Items 1 through 3.
Shall move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. We've already taken care of E. So next up is recognition of visitors on a non-agenda item. Anyone who... No? Okay.
Just to clarify, we, we covered everything in E?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yep. Okay. Future meetings and events. Wednesday, April 17th, there will be a board meeting here at the high school at 7:00 PM. 6:00 PM executive session. Again, I will not be here for that meeting. Wednesday, May 1st, in the high school cafeteria will be the Meet the Candidates Night at 6:30 PM. 6:30 PM. And then Wednesday, May 8th, there is a regular board meeting, which is also the 2019-20 budget hearing here at the high school, 7:00 PM, 6 o'clock executive session. And then on Tuesday, May 21st, the annual district budget vote and Board of Education election from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And as I've noted in prior meetings, I am not running again for the board, so there will be an open seat. There's two seats up for, but Mr. Fishbein will be running again, so...
We may try and convene policy committee, too. It's, we don't have a date yet to try and get the, those three policies back for the next meeting, if we can, if we can make a date.
I've given them my proxy.
And I will get the text that Meredith requested.
Thank you.
Okay. There's no reason to go back into executive session, so can I have a motion to close the meeting?
Shall move.
Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for your patience.